I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you will please read the roll. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Here.
And Mayor Stonehouse?
Here. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. I would ask for a motion for approval or a motion for change. Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move that the motion, the agenda be approved.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Reynolds, anything further?
None.
Commissioner Frazier?
No.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to announcements. I will repeat the vacancies we have in city volunteer committees and boards. Board of Zoning Appeals, three openings. Board of Review, three openings. Groundfield Redevelopment Authority, two. Harbor Advisory Committee, two. Housing Commission, two. Investment Advisory, two. Local Development Finance Authority, two. Local Officers Compensation Commission, one. And the Marquette County Transit Authority, one. I encourage citizens to volunteer for these committees. The applications are available in the city manager's office or online. It really is a wonderful venue to be able to get citizen input directly to the city commission on all of these different subject areas. So I encourage you to very seriously think about that. That brings us then to recognition of one of the committee members who was timed out. David Brooks, if you could please come to the podium.
Mr. Brooks was a member of the Board of Review. And in honor of your leaving the board, I have the certificate of retirement, or certificate rather than appreciation. We're working on it. But more importantly, I have an official City of Marquette t-shirt. That you've been owning yet by being a member of the City Committees. If you need a different size or color, the city manager's office is available.
No wool blotting.
No.
Jamie Weider, are you here?
Yeah.
Please step up. I didn't see you there.
I sort of figured what he was doing.
Ms. Weider is newly joining one of our committees, and that is the Arts Committee, Arts and Culture. Happy to have you there. And I have a very special token for you.
Why?
And this is an official City of Marquette pin. You'll only get it when you join a city commission, I know, city commission, when you join a city committee. And I am told it has magical property.
Oh, boy.
Please guard it with your life.
Be very careful. Thank you so much.
Now, you need to be sworn in, and our clerk is right here to do it.
All right, fantastic.
So if you want to stand for a few years.
Stand right here.
Perfect. So.
Thank you. I, Jamie Weider, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Marquette. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee of the City of Marquette according to the best of my ability. Thank you.
At least we get a nice applause. Commissioners, that brings us down to number three, which is an appointment, and that is Bernard Olds to the Harbor Advisory Committee. Commissioner Campana?
Thank you so much.
I'd like to motion that we appoint Bernard Olds to the Harbor Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending six, one of twenty-one.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
Commissioner Campana, any comments?
Just happy to see someone volunteering for this committee. He will be very good for the committee.
Mr. Schlegel?
That's a good enough one for me. Thank you for serving.
Any other commissioners? All those commissioners voting in the affirmative, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any negative, signify by saying no. Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to the reappointment, and that'll be a reappointment of Christine Granger to Public Art Commission. Commissioners, Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we reappoint Christine Granger to the Public Art Commission for a term expiring February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Commissioner, uh, yeah, Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
No further comments.
Commissioner Smith?
Just thank you for serving.
Any other commissioners? Hearing none, all those commissioners in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any commissioner voting no, please signify by saying no. Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to public comments. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. And I would ask you to use this podium directly ahead of the commission.
Good evening. Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic Street. I'd like to reserve time to speak during the public hearing and also during new business, so item six and item eight, please. And I apologize to the city attorney if I once again reserved time in a public hearing when I didn't have to.
Unnecessary, correct.
Not necessary, okay. But anyway, I want to speak. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Weingarten. I'm the newly appointed chair for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I'd like to request time to speak on point number eight tonight. Thank you.
Again, to reiterate, it is not necessary to reserve time to speak on a public hearing. Everyone will be given an opportunity to do so.
Forgive my fluidity in this. I'm no seasoned public speaker, but my name is Mike Fishman. I'm a resident here in Marquette County and city. I'm from Jacksonville.
Physical address.
My apologies. Three zero eight Rubeline Street.
Thank you.
We have gathered here before you today as a show of care and determination. We have been deeply saddened by our constituents' plan to opt out from providing the opportunity of commercialized cannabis to the people he serves. The Marquette community has shown an unwavering favor for recreational use and supports cannabis in a free market. As soon as we found out about these meetings, we knew we had to show up en masse to have our voices heard. Many of us could not be here tonight, as the snow today has created quite a burden on many of our members. But we are an impassioned group of budding scientists from all over the country, of varying ages and various walks of life. We have seen what positives legalization brings in many different areas, and it brings lower alcohol and prescription drug-related abuse and death, as well as lower traffic fatalities. Opening the floodgates for commercial cannabis bolsters a community's economy by providing a new industry. To us, it seems as though fear is the sentiment holding us back from taking a leap of educated and tested faith into bringing Marquette to the forefront of cannabis commercialization and policy, effectively positioning Marquette as the acting role model for surrounding municipalities. Now, we recorded the last town hall meeting and are very easy counterpoints to many of the people's views whom were against opting into the commercialization wagon. We will address them in our coming speeches. After addressing these points, there should be nothing holding us back fear-wise from opting in except fear of the unknown. But even that, we should not be fearful about because there are many examples and models for us to use for reference to enact our own properly running policies in time. If you truly are listening to people on this matter, then it should be easily, or it should be easy for you to discern who is acting for special interests and who is truly hoping to bolster Marquette and put it on the map. The fact is that Marquette as a whole has what it takes to enact proper policy in a timely manner without much fear of failure or mistakes. Plus, not only does the population favor it, but you have a technological cannabis research hub in the making that creates a large cannabis culture here. Regardless of the rest of the population, you have a student body that is composed of either experts or soon-to-be experts on cannabis. You essentially have a free expert panel at your fingers. Just as you, who have been elected to serve us, we are here to serve you, if that means facilitating enacting policy to allow our populace to operate with cannabis under a free market. And the people have spoken, and we implore you to embark on this undeniably fruitful journey in cannabis commercialization. Thank you for your time and consideration.
It is inappropriate, please, to applaud after a speaker. We will keep a level of decorum. Sir?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sean McGill, and I live at three twenty-nine Spalding Hall at Northern Michigan University. First, I would like to take a little time to briefly introduce myself. As I said, my name is Sean McGill, and I attend Northern Michigan University. I am a medicinal plant chemistry major. I'm also a member of the Smart Club or the Student Marijuana Alliance for Research and Transparency. I'm originally from Connecticut and personally never could have imagined myself living in Michigan, let alone the frozen tundra we all call home. After living here for a while, I've come to realize it's something I will never forget. Marquette has so much to offer, much more than the relentless white-out snowstorms we've recently been experiencing. The medicinal plant chemistry major and the unique opportunities this route of studies will provide me is what drew me here. And the city's uniqueness, along with its raw beauty, is what made me fall in love with the place I now call home. Marquette and the state of Michigan as a whole are in a time period where major reform around cannabis law is taking place. Marquette is the most populated city in the Upper Peninsula, and for this reason has always been a very influential leader throughout the U.P. In this situation, Marquette has the potential to not only be an influential leader for the U.P., but for all of Michigan. Not only is Marquette the epicenter of the U.P., but it's also home to the nation's first major devoted to studying cannabis. Unfortunately, due to the gray areas within federal laws, as students, we're not allowed to study cannabis or related plants, despite the fact that this is what we are devoting our lives to and will be the first college graduates with degrees devoted to this field. Many of us have traveled here from a wide variety of locations throughout the United States in hopes of not only learning about, but being able to work with cannabis, because as everyone knows, the best way to learn is by doing. We're not only eager to study and work with cannabis, but we're educated and constantly looking for ways to further our education. Marquette as a town has the ability to provide the means necessary for us to get the absolute most out of our educations and prepare us for our future endeavors. While the first class to graduate with this degree will only have around fifteen students, the freshman class now has around two hundred and fifty medicinal plant chemistry majors. As a group of students, we alone would be able to provide a large amount of the employment necessary to set up a healthy cannabis market within Marquette. Clearly, the major is growing at an unprecedented rate. A similar trend can be observed within the cannabis market as a whole. Marquette has a unique opportunity to create a set of laws that are in alignment with the town's values and also take advantage of the unstoppable growth of the cannabis market while properly educating students like myself, who will inevitably be influential leaders within the cannabis market of not only Michigan and the Upper Peninsula, but the United States as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Change of pace. Tom Clark, neighbor, two ten South Fourth Street. I have a neighbor problem. About three weeks ago, I stopped a public works plow driver who was plowing Spring Street, the three hundred block, which is my same block that you're on, and we have essentially a street between us. And I asked him not to pile snow on my fence because it was getting high and it was getting dangerous, and I was concerned about the status of my fence. He acknowledged my comments, and he plowed. About a week later, as the snow continued to accumulate and was still being piled higher, I ran into, I think, the facilities manager. I'm not sure. I know the man, but I'm not, don't know his title. And I asked him if he could ask them to cease piling snow up against my fence. And as I said that to him, he was on the street and he was in his truck. I noticed there's no snowbank on the city side. Everything is blown into the street, and then it's all moved across the street and put on my side of the street, which is probably a violation of your ordinance. But I don't really care about that so much as I do. I care about my fence. The last thing I did was, last Saturday, I sent a lengthy text to the director of public works explaining the problem, explaining the history, asking him to respond about getting the snow removed because my fence is starting to bend. The metal part is bowing, the wood part is leaning over. I'm concerned about it. The stuff that's piled up against it is not white fluffy snow. It's street crap. It's the sand and the salt and the mud and the ice chunks, and it gets heavy. And the more dense it gets, the heavier it gets, so I'm very concerned. After I sent that text message to Mr. Ken Benzey, I did not receive a reply. I haven't received one as of this time. That was about three twenty on Saturday. Sunday, we had a little storm. Monday morning, I went out to start my snow removal, and I see now that the snowbank is higher than my fence. It is not a peak bank like most of us have in front of our house. It's a square one, thanks to my fence. It's probably five feet wide and it's eight or nine feet tall. It's a solid block of road crap. And it's all leaning on my fence. But it's not all leaning on my fence anymore. Now it's coming over my fence. I had road chunks in my pond today. My wife's car was parked alongside my garage. Her car was hit with road chunks. We're talking ten feet away at least from the road, maybe more. So I did call and stop by, actually, the city manager's office, and he was in a meeting, and we weren't able to connect today. But I saw that this was the meeting tonight. Mr. Angeli has not heard any of this from me before this very moment. I need relief. You're not being a good neighbor, and I need help because one way or another, that snow is going to be.
I have to stop you now with three minutes.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Perry Boyd, and I am a resident of Marquette County. I live at nineteen thirty-seven Van Ever Avenue. I stand before you today because I would like for Marquette to opt in, allowing for the legal sale of recreational cannabis within our city limits. I moved to Marquette from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania just slightly over a year ago to come to Northern Michigan University for the Medicinal Plant Chemistry Program. As I said, I am now a citizen of Marquette. One of the big reasons that I decided to move here is because I thought that I, I saw how close Michigan was to legalizing cannabis statewide, and I thought, oh, cool, I'd have an opportunity to have jobs and internships while I'm going to school. It is now legal to use, possess, grow, and sell cannabis in the state of Michigan. I know I'm not the only student here to travel here from afar distance, hoping to find opportunity within Marquette. This small, beautiful town is unfortunately far away from any of our current options we have for internships or jobs. If we have now decided that, yes, it is legal to use and possess cannabis in the state of Michigan, and, yes, the people of Marquette are in support of opting in, then why not? What's the wait? The distribution and sale of cannabis will not be stopped by us opting out. It just means that Marquette will not see any of its possible tax dollars from doing so, including portions of the ten percent excise tax, such as fifteen percent for the communities that opt in and fifteen for the counties that opt in. It will also prevent those with interest in the industry from becoming further involved. By opting in, Marquette could set an example for the rest of Michigan. We would be providing more opportunity for the people to have the jobs doing what they want, where they want to. The city would also benefit by the extra revenue and could further use it to improve this town. The laws call for regulating marijuana like alcohol, and by choosing to opt out, we are doing just the opposite of that. Let's not wait around. Let's be the first of many. Let's allow this legal sale of recreational cannabis within our city and see our city prosper.
Thank you.
My name is Cameron Bryant, and my address is two four one Van Antwerp on NMU's campus. Good evening, everyone. My name's Cameron Bryant. I'm from Louisville, Kentucky, and I'm currently a student at NMU. I moved seven hundred miles to pursue a unique opportunity here at Northern, one that probably won't remain unique for much longer. I'm a medicinal plant chemistry major, and I only have four semesters left until I graduate. With the attainment of my degree in sight, I look forward to career and internship opportunities. The problem is that none of the opportunities specific to my education are anywhere near. There are a couple downstate, but most lie a great distance westward. This program is less than two years old, but has already managed to attract significant nationwide attention, bringing people from places as far west as California and as far south as Texas. Hundreds of bright young minds are flocking to Marquette, all for the same reason, and every one of them face the same issue as me. Your decision on the topic at hand today will affect the trajectory of how many people in this program will stay in Marquette to give their knowledge, practice, and understanding to the city. This is crucial because a higher student retention rate is important in building and maintaining a better economy and community. NMU will not remain the only school offering this program for much longer. Neglecting an opportunity to establish this industry here will ensure that NMU and Marquette lose these students to other places that have educational and career opportunities for them, which would be a shame because NMU pioneered this educational pathway. This will be a huge opportunity wasted, an opportunity that the people of Marquette and greater Michigan have made clear they want. As current leaders, please listen to the voice of your people. I know that there is some tentativeness moving in this direction because cannabis is still considered a Schedule One drug federally. I don't think that should stop Marquette because it hasn't stopped the West Coast, and there has still been no federal backlash in states that have an open functional industry. It also seems increasingly likely, barring a twenty twenty catastrophe like the one in twenty sixteen, that cannabis will be declassified on a federal level. So it's up to you to decide whether or not you want Marquette to be ahead of the curve or behind it. Embracing Proposition One is in fact an interest of unique importance for Marquette in particular. Further than voters expressing their voice last November, Marquette has the potential to become a cornerstone in a legitimate industry that is currently growing at an accelerating rate. Because NMU is the pioneer for this educational program, if you work with them to secure the resources necessary to support this industry here, you will be able to funnel locally educated scientists directly into available positions. Not only this, but you will become the example to follow on a local, state, and regional level. You could be the example, and you should be the example, because if not you, then who else? The opportunity is now, and waiting will guarantee it pass you by. You have the choice to set the tone for how this should go in Michigan. I hope you make the decision that exemplifies a forward trend rather than complacency, and I hope you make the decision that reflects what your people want.
Thank you.
Good day. My name is Dustin Fulton. I'm a resident here and homeowner on five oh eight West Barraga. I'd like to thank all of you for your service and what you guys do. I have a unique perspective that I can almost guarantee nobody in this room has. I moved here from Humboldt County in California, and I've seen firsthand what this industry can do underground. I have read the ordinance, and I do understand that you guys, if this is to pass, you plan on looking at this once the state has come out with rules. However this goes, I do implore that the city council let this be regulated, tax this. You know, this is going to happen underground regardless. I would like to see this happen in a proper manner. I've seen first and foremost what it does to my neighbors and friends in Humboldt County where this is underground. I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Andrew Lawrence here, fourteen oh six West Avenue. So I'm so happy that you guys are here today because I think what you're hearing that might have a different perspective for you is that a lot of us are asking for regulations. We're not asking for a free-for-all of marijuana. Some comments at the last meeting, they said, it's okay, you can, don't worry, you can still use cannabis. I'm not a cannabis user. That's not what this is about. This is about commercialization and asking you to lead. We want robust regulations. Marijuana actually does better with regulations. And I know that you have received my email. I know that you know where I stand on cannabis commercialization in Marquette, so I'm not here to lecture you. But I am here to tell you that my problem with the opt-out as written is that it is justified as temporary, but there is nothing in it that forces you to make it temporary. So my suggestion was, if you feel you do need to opt out, I don't think you do, but if you feel that that's the route that you need to go, and you're good to your word, that you know Marquette will eventually embrace cannabis commercialization, then write it into the legislation of the opt-out, that it's only going to last until the state comes in. You could even have a three-month buffer. It could, you can compare the laws from what the state has given, from what you develop, and we want you to work hard over the course of the next ten, twelve months in developing your own regulation. So a lot of the students here today, I mean, you have expertise in this room. You have people in this room who have been working on cannabis commercialization for decades. Caesar Escobar back there. I want you to listen to him. I want you to understand that you might not know how to regulate cannabis in Marquette, but there's people who do, and there's citizens who want you to lead. We've said that two hundred and fifty municipalities in the state have opted out, so Marquette should too. But that is just another example of how you want to wait, and you want to follow legislation, and you want to follow other cities. But we are asking you to be leaders, and that's what it comes down to here. So again, this is only a speckle of what I know. I sat down with Caesar and experts and lawyers and academics for the past two weeks in trying to get a different perspective and understand the whole facet of cannabis commercialization, and I just realized how much I didn't know. And so I would implore you to bring other people to the table too, especially people like Caesar and people like the students here at the Medicinal Plant Chemistry Program. That's valuable resources that we can really hone in on and make this work for Marquette. We want robust regulations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Caesar Escobar. Three two two West Ridge here in Marquette. I moved here in August also for the Medicinal Plant Science Program. I come from Oregon. When I had heard about the Medicinal Plant Science Program, I was incredibly excited because I'd realized that as a scientist myself, I'm a respiratory therapist, and I'd been studying the constituents of this plant and how it affects the body medicinally for ten years, that I didn't have a safety net. There was no school. There was nothing that I can go to, like I did with respiratory therapy, to be able to teach me more about this plant, and then I found about Northern Michigan University's Plant Science Program. I came here very excited, and I kind of saw that there was a split between like what the city had and going on and what the school was kind of teaching. And I just want to implore you guys to, as a lot of the students have said, to use the students as a way of being able to decide the legislation that moves forward. There's a lot of complications when it comes to the cannabis industry, whether we're looking at hemp or whether we're looking at CBD, whether we're looking at medical, whether we're looking at recreational, where we have the people that are educated in this. We have the people who are experienced in this to be able to help you guys make the rules and kind of make it an even playing field for Marquette citizens, because certain cities have had issues with big money coming in and not allowing the mom-and-pop shops to be able to be entrepreneurs. This is an opportunity for the citizens of Marquette to become successful. It's an ability for us to tax it, and the tax money can go to the police department. You guys can work with the universities to be able to develop tests, to be able to find, you know, marijuana in the mouth or whatever. All of the problems that arise from any of this stuff can be worked out. There are, there's plenty of legislation all over the nation right now that you guys can pull from to where you can see what works and what doesn't work. There's plenty of statistics now. We've had statistics in place for over ten years in Oregon to where we can see what it looks like when the youth does it. We can see what it looks like with traffic accidents, all that stuff. Those numbers are out there. It's just up to you guys really to check that stuff out and allow Marquette, because you have such an awesome program, to be kind of like the poster child of how it should be done. There is an ability for marijuana, whether it's recreational, medical hemp, to be able to work in the community very well with law enforcement, with schools and everything, and my big point on it is education. The thing that we need the most is to be educated on all of this. So whether you opt in or opt out, I implore you, please, to use the citizens that you have available who know about this stuff and who are eager and wanting to move forward with it to be able to help you guys make your decisions and rest your uneasiness of it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cody Merritt, twenty twenty, long year of Department two D. As the president of NMU Student Government, I think it's awesome. We have so many students here that are eager to volunteer and help make this work. I'd like to thank the I'd like to thank the Commission for allowing the community to come out and speak today regarding the proposed city ordinance. Commercializing marijuana in Marquette has many positive benefits. By staying opt-in and still allowing this industry in our community, we can create new businesses and jobs, not just dispensaries, but also manufacturing. Not to mention the tax revenue and the boost to the consumer spending from residents, neighborhoods, and communities that will come here into Marquette to spend their money on these types of products in our city. Our current proposed ordinance would prohibit these types of establishments, and all we have been given is the word of a few of our commissioners that this is going to be temporary. If this is the case, then why not amend the proposed language to state and address the fact that it is in fact temporary? I would recommend the Commission reach out to Lansing, our legislative representatives as well, and ask for this, and have the state's rules and regulations regarding the industry include a 30-day grace period once the policy is adopted before issuing permits and licenses to allow municipalities the time to adjust to what the state has set. The people of Marquette have spoken, and about 60% of voters voted in favor of Prop One. They knew what they were voting for. To opt-out is to ignore the will of the people. So I ask this Commission today to reject this proposed ordinance and consider some of the compromises I mentioned here today. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Devin Rash, and I live in Majors Hall at NMU. I'm a junior in the Medicinal Plant Chemistry Program. Just like many of the other students here who came here, I am part of the student-led organization SMART, the Student Marijuana Alliance for Research and Transparency. One of the goals of this organization is to bridge the gap between the public and those who study cannabis. This is the perfect opportunity to aid in the educational gaps that many generations of misinformation have presented. The Medicinal Plant Chemistry degree presents many unique opportunities in chemistry and entrepreneurship to the student body and to the public, which with requires the city's support. Students here are going to be on the forefront of research and ingenuity that will bring many opportunities to the city. Commissioner Schlegel, you mentioned that you were curious of other options there were other than the manufacturing and storefront. This is where the bioanalytical tract of the degree fits in. The bioanalytical tract was designed to train students, and the analytical testing needed to ensure that products were not being misrepresented. Manufacturing facilities legally are required to send products to a third-party testing facility to ensure that they are free of chemicals, such as pesticides and other components that would be harmful to ingest. This is where I see potential for the city of Marquette to become the destination for standardized quality control and quality assurance. Commissioner Hill, you put, I appreciate your push to involve the city in designing and formatting these laws. I truly believe that with such an ambitious community, involvement will be an understatement. Every time I venture off-campus, I am met with such positive energy about the people of this community who openly share their personal testimonials about cannabis. I understand that Marquette County has an actual drug problem when it comes to manufacturing and distribution of methamphetamine. In addition to helping people wean off drug dependencies, communities that have legalized recreational use of cannabis have been with very conclusive reductions in opioid use as well as other drugs. A survey conducted by the Substance Use Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration showed methamphetamine users' rates plummeted by nearly half, and cocaine users also dropped in communities that involved, that invited recreational use of cannabis. In addition to reductions in these useful drugs, or in the use of harmful drugs, inviting recreational businesses into the city would bring tax revenue that would benefit our community and allow us to increase our police presence and training. Like many other people have said, cannabis is already legal, and all we're talking about is whether or not we want facilities in our town where our trained students from the university can help and work as well as internship. Why not keep these investments local? The sooner we make decisions to opt-in, the sooner we will begin to educate our police force on the effective onsite sobriety testing and redirect the new revenues towards enforcing these laws. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Jeff Verido, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on Item Eight. These are my opinions. Our Rid Street sidewalk wasn't plowed until February 21st, after several storms, including the big one. Management is asked to teach the operators how to swivel the chute so they don't pack private driveways full of dense, or walkways full of dense snow. Humans cannot compete against large machines. On account of heavy snow on February 12th, the garbage hauler missed a box of cardboard, which was understandable, but not the two-thirds hour, two and one-third hours it took to arrange a pickup. The number in our phone book goes to South Texas where English is a second language. They acted like they'd never heard of Michigan. When a supervisor finally got me to Michigan, I had to repeat all the information just to find out that wasn't the right center either. Twice on hold for supervisors, the line went dead. Three calls to our service center went unanswered until after the fact. Then no one took responsibility. Along with the cable company, waste management acted as incompetently as any entity I've ever known. The common denominator is both are accountable to this board, which maybe to no coincidence mishandles its constituents similarly. Another commonality is no competitive options are available other than these mega entities. Please offer us a choice. February 11th, advocates mentioned some of the life-saving benefits of marijuana. One reminded us that herb was brought to us by the Creator. It's here for many purposes. Another advocate admitted to the potential for smell issues. Weed shops create little smell though. Large grow operations belong in industrial areas or the edges of town. Cannabis smells like it's intended to burn, whereas cigarettes smell as if their sole purpose is to kill the users and us both. While I don't advocate weed shops near schools, what's the difference? Toking isn't allowed at weed shops, so smell and rowdy behavior are non-factors. Would we rather put a bar or a weed shop near a school? The answer is too obvious. Our male members want to wait on the state so not to rush into this and to do it right, so why the rush to opt-out then? This appears no different than the way this board handles land use items. I believe Mr. Stonehouse said weed is available. Where? The only ways to obtain it are to grow it, gift it, or steal it. Members keep reminding us it's legal, but the only practical way to get any is illegal. Perhaps medical growers can sell their surplus with 8% tax going to the city. Mr. Stonehouse also owes us further explanation on why he said the numbers aren't there. It's assumed there'd be an annual fee, and part of the 8% state tax would go toward maintaining our roads. If neighboring cities opt-out, our draw will widen, and our restaurants will prosper from thousands of diners with the munchies, many of whom will plug those god-awful parking meters. It's a win-win, so the sooner the better.
Anyone else?
My name is Jeff, 900 Norwood Street, and I think I offer kind of a different opinion. I'm a criminal justice major, and I stand up here to speak. It's not just in Michigan, it's everywhere. Our prisons are full, our jails are full. You see cots everywhere. You see overcrowding, and most of these are minor drug offenses that people are being put away for. And as my peer, Mr. Rash, said, excuse me, he said that people who have opted into the marijuana have fell off the methamphetamine train, which thus decreases methamphetamine crime rates, thus making more space for, in our prisons. And overall, Marquette's on the map. It was on the map as soon as it said Northern Michigan University was allowing the medical degree. And since we're already on the map, we might as well opt into it just to be a poster child for what it should be. There is no stop in marijuana. It is going to reach other states, and it's up to us to make the, how do I say this? It's up to Marquette to put the initial footprint down, so other states can follow our lead. It's no secret, the cons and pros of the marijuana industry, but overall, it'll increase revenue in Marquette, increase small business revenue by people who are, do use medical marijuana, as he said, the munchies. It'll increase revenue with people spending in our stores, thus making Marquette more of a bigger, more of a bigger attraction. But overall, I just wanted to say, from a criminal justice standpoint, for us to opt into this, I think it'll help free more of our jail space and our prison space because I do know that is a problem, and yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name's Jesse Allen, 522 Jupiter Street. Well, you guys all know, I was here last time with my friend Devin here, and I think we all know this means a lot of money, you know? And I'm trying to read the vibe of the town here in the last couple of weeks, and I feel like the concern is, why fix something that's not broke? It's a beautiful town. I love it here, and I understand some of your concerns probably as far as what this would bring to the community. And those are also my concerns. You know, I moved up here from downstate. I love my state. I love this place even a little more than downstate, a lot more to be honest. And I don't want to, you know, I don't want a bunch of big, I don't want a big business to come in and take money that could be coming from the community. I feel like opting out, and we're not even saying opting in, just don't opt out, because if you do that, I think it's going to send a very discouraging message or a blow to the students here that are hoping to stay in the community, and the sooner they are more confident you guys are going to embrace this, the more we can start working together, and these are the experts. I've been all over the country. I do play poker professionally, and I know a lot of people all over the world. I've been out to Colorado. I don't like how they're doing it there. I lived in Lansing for seven years, and I do not want to let them set the standards for what we're going to do. I feel the experts should do it, and I believe the people of this town are very good. I love the community. I love to go out and socialize, and these students, they're amazing. You know, I actually withdrew from the program because I thought, well, I don't really need to do this. I was worried there weren't people like this out there. And here they are, a bunch of them, and there's a doctor here and a professor, and they're all on board. We all want to do this. We want to do it the right way. We want to work with you every step of the way. We are the experts, and I don't trust anybody else, to be honest with you. I think we'll do it right, and we can be the pebble in the water that ripples across this whole pond, this movement in this country. So just, please, just consider this even a little more. Just opt-out is not the right option, I think. If you just say no to this, give us more time. I'm sure you'll start to feel the way we feel and a lot more confident about moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Denise Lovelace, and I also have a criminal justice background.
If I need an address, please.
255 Orange Road.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say, I am retired Air Force, and I have lived all over the country also. So I wanted to point out the theory of unintended consequences. So with every place that I've lived and everything that I've done, whether it be with Homeland Security, the FBI, the unintended consequences, every place that I've lived in this country, I chose to retire here in Marquette County. So I know what's out there. I know that Marquette is a unique place, and I think that people come here for a purpose, and I think that they enjoy living here, and I think it is an extremely unique place to live in this country. So I just hopefully that you consider heavily the choices and the unintended consequences that could come from this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Mariah Redmond. I live at 189 Lakewood Lane. I know that one of the big concerns of the commissioners is where retail shops will go, and I'm under, and I have the understanding that the DDA is not in favor of retail facilities being in the downtown area, although we do have 15 bars downtown. So I did want to bring that up, as well as the DDA's zoning facilities with mom-and-pop shops with corporate interests. So my main point that I want to bring up to you when you are coming up with legislation, or the rules, guidelines, is being in favor of mom-and-pop shops or small businesses, being able to thrive rather than a lot of corporate interests that I know have been working towards, you know, the marijuana industry. So we can continue to import talent to the town rather than continually exporting students, et cetera. Yeah, and then also as well bringing up all of the mixed-use land that we have zoned on Holly Street or along the Highway 41, also being, I think, great options for other retail facilities, but mainly the size of retail facilities, maybe a ratio of corporate versus mom-and-pop, so that the citizens of the community can continue to thrive and benefit off of the tax dollars as well as the city and the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Romeo Verno. I live at 900 Norwood. And I actually came here from Florida last semester, I mean, last summer, sorry about that, when I heard about the Medicinal Plant Chemistry Program. And getting now, now I have about four semesters until I graduate, and you know, I'm looking for internships, and all of them are downstate or in other states, and I am making a plan for like different summers, leaving Marquette to go do these internships. But just to reiterate the point, like if there was a certain business that offered internships, jobs, anything like that, then it would, you know, provide me an easy way. I love this town. I love summers, you know, 50 times better than winter, obviously. So it's beautiful in summer here, and I'd love to stay here and enjoy everything, but you know, when it comes time to summer, I need to go do an internship, and I need to go somewhere else, and that's three months there where I could be in Marquette, you know, spending money, and that's one out of thousands of students that soon are going to be in the Medicinal Plant Chemistry Program. So it's just that, you know, it's taking away from the city in general, just because people have to leave, anything like that. And when I graduate, I would, I've never heard of Marquette in my life until last year, and honestly, just coming here, just like a few of my peers said, I fell in love with it. I love it skiing, there's hiking, there's everything, digging your car in the snow. It couldn't be more fun. So in actuality, you know, when I, when I leave, obviously you got to look for opportunities. So if it's not established here, if we don't have, you know, any, if there's just a small shop or anything like that, it's going to be less reason to stay, other than something that's established, and where the guidelines, and you know, Marquette is the first to make these laws, you know, it would give more of a reason to stay and make our own business here. If I'm planning on opening my own business, and if I could open it here, if I already saw there's other businesses that are prospering, I would choose, I would want to open it here. I'd love to live in Marquette, but you know, at the moment, it's just there's so many opportunities elsewhere that it's really dragging away from a reason to stay here. So I just kind of wanted to reiterate that point. Thank you for your time.
Gavin Gibson, 525 North Third Street, Department One. Hi, thank you all for your time. I would just like to make a comment that the largest growing segment of cannabis users is actually those in the 50-plus age group. And when you factor in the accessibility issue of our Marquette residents, the ability to use cannabis as a medicine is fantastic. I'm actually a medical patient myself. It's life-changing. It's made me way, way, way more happy than, I hit my brain a couple of years ago, so I'm sorry. I'm a little nervous right now. But my point is that you're taking away the opportunity of several hundred residents of Marquette to have access to medical medication that will make their life way easier by just going right down the street to get it versus having to go somewhere else to get it. So the accessibility of cannabis alone to residents 50-plus, as well as the rest of us, is huge. And that would serve as a huge portion of our Marquette population, not just the youth. And I would like to factor in that that has its value as well, and it has kind of been overlooked, so thank you.
Thank you. One last chance. Anyone else to address the Commission?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I know there are people here to speak on other agenda items. I don't know if they, Lois, if you wanted to speak, it would be either now on eight, or you could reserve time for number eight. I think they might have just gotten confused.
Certainly you can do, oh, good point, Mr. Manager. If anyone would like to...
We'll reserve time. There's four of us here.
Lois Campy, six twelve East Michigan. And I'd like to reserve time for item number eight.
So done. Thank you.
Martha Fitzgerald, five forty East Michigan. I'd reserve time for item number eight.
Walt Anderson, four thirty North Lake Shore Boulevard. I would like to reserve time for item number eight.
Chris Anderson, four thirty North Lake Shore Boulevard. I'd like to reserve time for number eight.
And Jess Jones, four hundred North Lake Shore Boulevard. And I'd like to reserve time for number eight.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. That brings us to the presentation. And that will be number five, the Downtown Development Authority by Executive Director Mona Lang. Mona, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Stonehouse. Well, now I know how to get young people engaged. I would like to make one quick comment, though. The DDA Downtown Development Board has never addressed at this point cannabis, cannabis shops. So it is, it's still an open subject. Obviously, we're not going to discuss something until the City Commission has moved forward on a, a policy. So wherever that rumor came from, it's incorrect. So we're going to talk a little bit about the DDA. And yes, we bring you the god-awful parking meters. Okay, just as a background, I always like to kind of just give a little bit of re-education. And so for all of our young people here, they will know what the DDA is and what we do. We are actually a public authority of the city of Marquette. We are not a private membership group. We're a city authority. Actually, we were founded in accordance with Michigan Public Act one ninety-seven, which as of January first, twenty eighteen, was replaced with Act fifty-seven. That act recodifies all of the tax increment financing authority legislation across the state of Michigan, except for Brownfield. The fundamental goals of the DDA are, number one, to increase our property values, to create and maintain a favorable business environment, ensure the sustainability of the district, and to support our downtown property owners, businesses, professionals, and residents, and in particularly our small businesses and our entrepreneurs. This is actually the downtown district. It's a big district. In twenty-eleven, Third Street, the North Third Street became part of the overall district. I'm going to give you a little history. It was actually established in nineteen seventy-six, with the first tax increment financing development plan was adopted in eighty-four, expanded in ninety-two, with a second development plan that would have expired in twenty thirteen. However, the third development plan was created and adopted by the City Commission and approved by the City Commission in twenty-eleven. And that plan goes till twenty thirty-six. The district, again, was expanded into September of twenty-eleven to include North Third Street from Bridge to Fair. We have approximately four hundred and ten businesses in the total district. And we employ about thirty-one, those businesses employ about thirty-one hundred people. This is the DDA Board. I'm not going to go through them. We do have a downtown resident on the board, which is required by the Public Act. And fifty percent of the DDA Board members must have a financial interest in the downtown district. Staffing, we have an executive director, myself, assistant director, a events and program coordinator, and then some maintenance staff. And we also employ a full-time farmer's market manager. We've grown since I've taken the job. And twenty-one years ago, I was the only person. So we've really seen the, the authority expand and successfully move forward a lot of programs. This is an overview of the taxes that we receive. We have a, what would be a two-mil tax. However, because of the Headley Amendment, it is reduced to one point eight seven two eight mils. And you can see where we receive our taxes. Ninety-six thousand dollars, approximately seventeen thousand something comes from Third Street, seventy-eight thousand from the DDA taxes, from the original DDA. However, that seventy-eight thousand is reduced by the tax, tax increment financing. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that. Just a quick overview. I know that the commission understands it. But I think it's good sometimes for the public to, just to understand what it is. Tax increment financing is actually a development tool that encourages private investment by capturing certain taxes on properties. And then that tax is reinvested in public projects to, in turn, then create interest in further investment. Tax increment financing funds can only be used for the purposes that are specified in the tax increment financing development plan, and only within the TIF, or tax increment financing district. This is an example of a TIF on a downtown property. The governmental unit continues to receive the taxes on what is known as the base value. And then the financing authority, whether it be the LDFA, the DDA, the Brownfield, whatever that tax increment financing authority is, they receive the tax on the difference between what the taxing value was when the authority went in, when the tax plan went into place, and today's value. We have been very successful with our tax increment financing plan. I think we're probably one of the more successful in the state. I have colleagues across the state who have seen their, their TIFs actually go into negative values. Ours has actually almost tripled. So that is amazing. This, I know you can't see this, but it was published. I thought I took this slide out because it was hard to see. But this actually is the annual report that we file with the Michigan Treasurer every year, and also published in the Mining Journal as a publication. This is our revenue. It's about one point four million dollars in revenue. As you can see, the major part of it, almost sixty percent, comes from tax increment financing. And then about, not quite thirty percent now comes from our parking revenues. Parking revenues help support cleaning the sidewalks from snow, which has been a horrible experience. Over the last couple of weeks, our guys are working really hard, really keeping their heads, heads above, I hate to say water, but keeping their heads above frozen water. But you can see how we are, we're distributed. We get some commons rentals, some farmer's market fees is really just about one percent of our income. And all of this will be available on our website, too, in more detail. And then this is our expenditures. Again, we, we're at about one point four million. Our major expenditure is maintenance and parking, capital projects, bond debt. We do have an outstanding bond. We did a major project on our parking structure several years ago. And that was a one point two million dollar project. So we have about six more years, I think, on that bond payment. And that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. We spend about fifty-eight thousand on the farmer's market, about seventy-eight thousand on promotions and activities, and then maintenance parking and just administration of operations. We manage for the city through contract. We manage seven parking lots and one parking ramp. There's a total of one thousand, but just shy of fourteen hundred public parking lots downtown. Of those, we have about five hundred, about five hundred permits that downtown employees actually rent for long-term, long-term parking. This is an operational analysis of parking structure, or I'm sorry, the parking fund. The, if we remove that bond payment, you can see that now that we've put the meters in, it's actually finally sustainable. We have run a deficit for many, many years. And that makes it difficult to actually look at and fund future parking projects. So the meters have not only, are they helping with the turnover and the management of the parking, they're also helping with financially to look at different projects and move forward as we have new parking needs. These are some of our activities and accomplishments through the last year. We received a twenty-five hundred dollar Keep America Beautiful grant. We were proud to get that. We used that to purchase cigarette receptacles throughout the, throughout the downtown, some educational about smoking and litter. We also were a sponsor for the MQT three sixty-five Community Calendar. We provide all the sound services and additional funding and support for the UP two hundred and midnight run. We replaced all of our US flags and flag baskets. I'm not going to go through all of them, because there's a lot of them. But the North Front Street Project, Streetscape Project, and the Hundred, South Front Street, that was almost a three hundred thousand dollar project to replace all the sidewalks, bricks, trees. We renewed the maintenance and management contract with the city for another five years. So we'll be maintaining and managing parking and sidewalks and public facilities. We've also relocated the DDA offices, which was a big move for us. And then we are working with a consultant to assist in a branding and identity enhancement program. We're involved in that right now. We distributed local facade grants to three building owners to help with the fronts of their buildings. We also, something I'm very proud of, is we were one of three communities out of fifty-two across the state to participate in a facade restoration initiative grant through the Michigan Strategic Fund that is managed by Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And we will match that with ten percent, so three hundred and thirty thousand dollar one-time pot we have, that we will be, we'll be accepting applications from property owners throughout the state, or I'm sorry, the state, throughout the, throughout the downtown, to make improvements to their properties. A maximum grant of fifty thousand with a one-to-one match, minimum grant of five thousand. So we're really looking for projects that are really going to make an impact. And we're really excited about that and able to bring that to the community. We also maintain six point six miles of sidewalk, some different facilities, the Main Street Elevator Tower, and the Portside Walkway, and the Namisto Pocket Park, the Commons, the Rosewood Walkway. We install all the holiday lights through contract, including the one at Matson Park. And that's about a fifty-three hundred dollar project for Matson Park. The cost for all of the downtown holiday lights is about fourteen thousand dollars. We maintain all the summer flower baskets and water them. We also manage and fund the downtown Marquette Farmer's Market. And we organize and sponsored thirteen events. Plus, we also collaborated with other organizations for seven events. We've raised over twenty thousand dollars for other community organizations. We're a good community neighbor. And we raised about twenty thousand dollars for private event sponsorships. We, this is kind of a breakdown of our hours. We've spent almost five thousand hours last year plowing and shoveling, four thousand, cutting grass, and landscaping. I'm not going to go through all of them. But we, as you can see, we're busy. We have monthly business get-togethers. We used to call them promotion meetings. And we just weren't getting too much of engagement. So we are trying to kind of rethink those. We're going to call them Downtown Connect and Third Street Connect. We're going to have quarterly meetings with our Third Street businesses. This actually isn't one of our businesses. We're trying to move those meetings and those gatherings out to the different businesses, so everybody can learn how to cross-promote each other. Our DDA maintenance staff, they do a lot of different things. This is them setting up and preparing for the Kiwanis Kitty Mutt Races. Some of the events that we do, we're really proud to bring the city a winter parade, and also sponsor the city's tree lighting. We do the Barreg Avenue Harvest Fest to bring attention to Barreg Avenue, so that we can get, have interest when we're ready. Eventually, we have the resources. We're going to do an infrastructure project on Barreg Avenue. The Blueberry Festival has become phenomenally successful. We'll see five thousand people down in the Hundred Block of Washington and hundred and two hundred blocks of Front Street. That's the last Saturday in July. And then Music on Third has kind of taken a life on its own. If any of you students are here, it's a fabulous event on Third Street. We do it the third Thursday on Third during the summer. We support public art. We've installed some public art. We do, do it for Art Week. We also do the events that we give back to the community. The Classic Cars on Third, which is the second Saturday in August, I believe, was, we work with the owners of the Third Base Bar in memory of their daughter, who was a victim of domestic violence. And last year, we raised over fifteen thousand dollars for that, for the Women's Center at that event. We've been meeting with the consultant. We had community meetings for that project. And we're moving forward with that. The downtown farmer's market is, is very successful. We see about two thousand people Saturday through that market. And estimated sales to the vendors that are at the market is about one point six million. We subsidize that market right now at the cost of about forty-five thousand dollars. So we are challenged to really find a source to make that market sustainable. And we will be working on that. The vendors right now, last year paid a hundred and sixty-five for an entire season. They'll pay a hundred and eighty-five for a booth this upcoming year. So we'll, we will be looking at ways to really make that self, self-funding. These are some of the upcoming projects and initiatives. We will be continuing to look at the parking system. We're going to be meeting with some vendors that do the pay-by-phone. We're going to be working with the city with their new enforcement system to look at digital permits, so that those employees that buy permits will no longer have to, to buy the hard copy. There'll be a digital permit. We're going to implement that branding and signage project. I'm going to show you some quick examples of that. Some things we need to really look at is we've got some challenges with Third Street. There are projects, I think, that some of those property owners would like to see done. We need to find a development funding source, whether it be a corridor improvement project, TIF, or another downtown DDA TIF. So we need to really look at that. We continue to look at that Hundred Block of Barreg Avenue project. That's always on our, kind of in, in our headlights when we have the resources to do that. And then to develop, our latest one we're going to do right now is we're going to put, have to put on RFQ for a development plan to assist the city in obtaining their redevelopment-ready certification. That was one of the missing links to that certification for the city. So this actually is an example of what the consultant has come up with as far as a hierarchy for the new branding for the downtown. The DDA is the organization. The other is the destination. And that is downtown Marquette as a whole, with Historic Downtown and Third Street as parts of that whole. These are some samples of what we think we would like to see when we get into further signage and funding for signage. We've had others. This is two consultants that have talked to us about a potential arch entering into Third Street to draw people up the Third, up the Third Street Hill toward Bridge Street, and then some entry signage. This is some examples of some future wayfinding signage. And then questions and comments. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Lang? Mr. Schlegel?
I'll kick it off. Mona, you do fabulous work. Your committee, your entire organization does great, great by me and great by the city of Marquette. Thank you for all your effort.
Thank you.
Many years ago, I was in the process of looking at opening up a business. And I went to Mona for one of these facade grants. Unfortunately, that, my, my business did not work at that time. But it was when I first realized how much went into this community from. But it was when I first realized how much went into this community from this group. They were willing to, you know, work with me through the process, and it's the best thing that never happened, let me tell you that, I can tell you right now. But, long story short, these guys are here for the community. They're here for the downtown businesses. We're talking a lot about mom and pop in this room tonight, and that's really what it is. It's to ensure that they have not only a voice, but a venue and an outlet to be as successful as they can with a group like this. I've talked with DDA people from all over the state of Michigan, most recently munising. And we sit and compare notes and talk about different things. This is what, you know, this is all part of what you guys are here tonight to talk to us about. So I'm glad that you were here for the presentation. Feel free to come back for some of them that are a little bit less entertaining, but nice job, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Campana.
Manah, I also would like to congratulate you for all the work that the DDA does. I've been in this city for over 40 years, and I've seen the change. I had a store on Third Street for 20 years, and since the DDA came into being and started doing their thing, the city has greatly improved. I mean, it was very drab and dull. Now it's a very active, vibrant-looking community. And you put on events that we never used to have, and that, again, makes Marquette special. So, you know, you are doing something positive, and we do appreciate that. In regards to the parking, I'm in favor of it. It's not my opinion, but people have told me that with parking meters, now they can park downtown. Now there are spaces open. It used to be you could drive the 100 and 200 block and not find a place to park because people would just park there all day, probably employees, I'm sorry to say. But now that they have to turn it over, spaces are open, people can get downtown. So yeah, it's going to cost you 50 cents or a buck, but I think it's well worth it. So I'm in favor of the downtown parking. I'd be in favor of more meters if I had to. So thank you for what you guys do.
Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, and I'll echo terrific work. It really makes all those festivals and things, the hard work to put that all together. Your staff does an outstanding job, and I've also seen compliments on the ability to walk downtown, even with all the snow, through the snow tunnels and canyons, and really, really appreciate all you do. And that the ice skating rink is down there as well. That's something they make happen. It's another wonderful part of being able to go outside and enjoy our Marquette 20 all months of the year. Three, I wanted, I was just downstate for a week, and I met someone who, the one time they had been here was during Blueberry Festival, and they were just blown away, that's the words, about what a terrific event that was, so how much fun they had. And part of what I was there for was energy, and certainly, when you go downstate, everyone wants to talk about electric vehicles and the changes in mobility, and that Ford and Chrysler are no longer car companies, they're mobility companies. And I just want to raise that, having just heard that every day for four days. Car share, you know, leasing cars by the hour, having spaces available for that, having more electric cars, the state's electric car, electric vehicle charging network, where the person directing it said that you'll be able to drive from Detroit to Marquette, that's the towns that they listed, using just an electric car. So just planting that out for everyone. And then bicycles and having ability for people to be able to safely bicycle around town, too. So thank you again for terrific work you do.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Smith.
Thank you for coming tonight, Manah. I know you do an excellent job, and so does your team. The events downtown, the lights, the flowers, it's wonderful. I was wondering how it's going. I know we kind of brokered a different deal with the DDA this year about the snow removal downtown, and I'm wondering how that's going. I know this year has been extraordinarily difficult with the amount of snow we've received.
It has been difficult. However, I, my compliments to Public Works. You know, it's been a tough one. It's hard, it's hard to actually drive down some of our streets with parking on both sides, and they've really stepped up to the plate. We're hoping that next year the reversal happen, and this will, eventually, this will all equal out. But yeah, you know, your Public Works does a great job, and we work really well with them. So, so far, so good.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. And my only other comment was I hadn't seen these pictures yet of the wayfinding signs and banners and things, and it looks fantastic. So do you know a timeline of when those might be rolling out into the community?
Well, we're still working on approval of this, the overall package. It's been, it's been a difficult process. One of the reasons that we really brought this forward to the board and through our organization is to try to find a way on how we're going to connect Third Street. It's been difficult, and I think that we, I think we're there. I think we've worked this out. We actually have meetings with the Third Street property owners. One is tomorrow morning at 8:00 at the Casa, in case anyone's interested, and then Wednesday night at 5:00 at the Casa. So we will be looking at some of this. We're going to share the finances with the Third Street property owners so they're really clear on where we are and what are we going to do to move forward.
Great. Thank you. Yep.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Frazier.
Great job with the DDA. You guys do your job. Thinking, what about a year-round, you said farmer's market is great, what about a year-round farmer's market? Why not? You know, there's lots of buildings, you know, Shopko possibly opening up. There's, you know, even doing the parking up at the hospital, who knows? You know, you're pretty smart, you'll figure it out someday.
Any other commissioners? If not, let me, let me wrap it up, Manah, by just saying stunning success.
Thanks.
I can't think of any other way of saying it. And for the students in the room, let me give you some ancient history. We're going to go back to the time of the Ferals, about like 1975, when downtown was damn near deserted, when it truly was a ghost town. It was not a place that you particularly wanted to be. The shops were arguably long gone, and it took the efforts of a group known as the DDA, and Manah was not the sole person way back then, but certainly was instrumental in taking it from nothing and giving us what we have today. So if you enjoy going downtown, and you enjoy the festivals, and you enjoy all of those activities that Manah talked about, that's a little bit of the history of what you don't see, what was there before, and how much better it has become. So thank you very much for all you do.
Well, thank you, commissioners, and, you know, we always really appreciate your support. We couldn't do it without, obviously, the support of the government. So once again, this is your success as well. So thank you.
Okay, this brings us to item six, which is the public hearing to adopt the ordinance 657. Clerk, if you would read the background, please.
Thank you, sir. On November 6th, 2018, the voters of the state of Michigan approved Proposal 1, which initiated new legislation known as the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. Among other things, the Act, 1, authorizes and legalizes the recreational possession, use, and cultivation of marijuana products by individuals who are at least 21 years old. 2, creates state-licensed marijuana establishments that include retailers, growers, safety-compliance facilities, processors, secure transporters, and microbusinesses, and any other type of marijuana-related businesses licensed by the state of Michigan for the commercial sale of recreational marijuana. And 3, reserves the right of each municipality to determine whether to allow or prohibit marijuana establishments within its boundaries. The Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs is charged with promulgating rules necessary to implement, administer, and enforce the Act. If the department does not timely promulgate the required rules or accept or process applications for a license to operate a marijuana establishment beginning one year after the effective date of the Act, licensure will be, will by default fall to local municipalities. The state may also promulgate rules before the one-year deadline. As the Act reads, "Once the state begins accepting applications for these facilities, the city will be bound by the local rules and infrastructure in place at the moment of application." This proposed ordinance provides for some short-term stability and gives the city the time necessary to establish local procedures consistent with the desires of the commission. Many municipalities have enacted an opt-out ordinance to allow time for the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs to establish rules and then evaluate whether to allow some or all of the types of marijuana businesses to operate in the city. City administration recommends this same approach by adopting the attached ordinance to prohibit marijuana establishments in the city at this time. Under proposed ordinance number 675, the commission shall review the ordinance within 60 days of the promulgation of final rules by the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. If the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs fails to promulgate rules, the commission shall review this ordinance no later than February 4th, 2020. The commission discussed this at length at their meeting on February 11th, 2009, and scheduled a public hearing for this evening. Fiscal effect none. Recommendation: Following the public hearing, adopt ordinance number 675, amending the city code to prohibit recreational marijuana establishments within the city pursuant to the Michigan Recreation and Taxation of Marijuana Act of 2018. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
That brings us then to the public hearing. And the public hearing is an opportunity, again, for the public to comment on this particular ordinance. I know many of you have done that already under public comments, so if, I guess what I'm saying is that if you have something new or different to offer, this is a great time to do it. I don't know that it's necessary procedurally to say everything, as you said previously, but obviously, it is a time when you may do so if you choose. The public hearing is open.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic, and I'm in favor of waiting for the state legislation to go into effect. I'm in favor of waiting, not because I'm anti-marijuana, not because I'm anti-cool, not because I'm anti-growth and development, but because marijuana is regulated differently depending upon state and federal law. And if you watch the 60 Minutes article I posted the link on on my Facebook page, there's a very successful marijuana situation in the state of Colorado. And by success, I literally mean millions of dollars of success in that state. The people, I think this would be a representative example of them, are very, very happy with their marijuana business. What is very difficult to reconcile, though, is that the federal government's refusal to treat marijuana as anything but a Class A, very dangerous drug, means you cannot do the financing of a marijuana business the same as you could anyplace else. Several of you are in business here, and the end of every day, you took your cash to a bank and you deposited. So you had a minimal amount of cash on your premises, and everybody knew that. You also could do business by check, by credit card, you could do business long distance. None of that is going to be available to marijuana shops. No bank, and again, if I'm speaking in hyperbole, no bank that I'm aware of will touch a dollar of marijuana money. And the reason for that is if they touch it, they're liable to the federal government for involving in drug work. Now, you people who study this, I don't know if you have a class in this. Do you have a class in the financial aspects of running a marijuana business?
New venture finance.
New venture finance, but have you talked to a banker? Will he take your business? Okay, that's the reason why I say wait. That's the number one reason I say wait. Because as soon as you have a marijuana business set up, you know what you're going to have? You're going to have the situation like the bank robber in the 30s when they asked him why he kept breaking into banks and robbing banks. He said, "That's because there's the money." You're going to have cash on hand in businesses, and when you have cash, you're going to have people who want to take cash. Sideways from that, you're also going to have to retrain all the police dogs in the United States, because most of them now are trained first on marijuana. It's a very pungent smell, and that's how they do their probable cause searches. And you've got to give police time to retrain their dogs so that they can have legitimate use of the dogs to go after people you don't want driving. So these are not, I'm sorry, I can't ever be the cool person, but these are not the cool reasons you talked about. This is serious stuff. I don't want businesses set up in Marquette that are going to be targeted by thieves, and I don't want all that money running around Marquette, because that much money brings in people who just want to hurt other people to get in money. That is my opinion. Wait. Let the state come up with some decent legislation, and let other people have time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jesse Allen, 522 Jupiter Street. I'd like to obviously respond to that. We got to really, success, I don't measure as just money. You know, success is doing something the right way. And for example, industrial hemp has been illegal for a while, and now it's, you know, it's out there, and CBD can be bought nationwide. This is a vape pen I bought in Minnesota. It's CBD, CB Distillery is the name on it. When I was out there a couple of weeks ago for a poker tournament, I took a couple of hits of this, and I had an immediate allergic reaction. And I've done plenty of research since, and there's just unknowns. If, this is the problem with big business getting the money here. If we do it that way, they're going to cheapen the quality of the product like you see everywhere. I mean, you can buy 10 McNuggets from McDonald's or Burger King for a dollar. You think that's good chicken? I don't think so. The same quality of, I'd love these students to break this pen open and study what's in here and tell me what made me have that allergic reaction so we can nip that stuff in the butt. Secondly, when we're talking about dogs, all right, I've already been pulled over and searched because my car smelled like marijuana, and actually didn't have any in it. I just kind of have it in my system a lot, and it's probably on my clothes, and I didn't even see the dog react, they just said it did. So they pulled me over, three cops pull up, a K-9 unit. I talked to the cops, tell them I'm in the program, tell them what I'm all about, shook their hands, laughing with them by the end. They let me go. They had three reasons that it pulled me over. I passed a guy, and I hit the fog lane, and, you know, whatever. They were just, I personally believe they're cracking down on trafficking of harder real drugs. So I'm okay with that. I'll take those risks. You can pull me over, as long as we're doing it by the books. I'll be in convenience from time to time. That's what happens in a revolution, and that's exactly what this is. And let's go to another point, banks, okay? So there's ways around that, you know? If we have to open up shops and, we'll take donations and give this stuff away for free. Or I'll start a church and just have people come donate, you know? We can do that. There's plenty of ways to get this done, and as long as we're moving forward in the right direction, I don't think it's going to be a problem here in Marquette. Nationwide, you have plenty of points, for sure. But if we start it, and I'm sure the police board, I mean, a lot of money is going to you guys, too, and I'm also for it, against every other drug there is and that's illegal, pretty much. So this is something that really just needs to be embraced, and the time is now. I mean, we can wait all we want, but waiting is just going to allow these big businesses to monopolize the market. Tobacco's getting involved, pharmaceuticals are getting involved, and I don't trust them. I trust these students, and I don't want them to go anywhere else. I want them to stay here in Marquette. I'd love to work with them, and I think you would want these people here. I mean, look at them. These aren't stoners, these are geniuses. Let's embrace this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Larter, 1406 West Avenue. I'm going to be quick, I do want to address some of the things that Margaret said. Margaret, you're absolutely right. People do get denied for loans if they are in the cannabis industry, and it's something that, it's important to have the perspective on how to mitigate a lot of these problems. Because if anybody's up here suggesting that the legalization or commercialization of cannabis is going to be all great, that's, it's not true. So it's important to have that perspective in ways that you guys, as a commission, can regulate and address those problems. Another way around that problem is to embrace community credit unions. Community credit unions aren't, they don't have the same regulations federally as banks, as you say. So there's so many caveats, and there's so many different things that you can address a lot of these problems with, and those perspectives are so important because they tell you which problems that you need to work on, which problems that you need to solve. And again, like, I just sat down with Caesar for an hour and another hour today, and there's so much knowledge, and we might not know, as a commission, how to regulate it within a certain timeframe. But if you put a temporary, if you need to opt out, I don't think you do, but if you do, if you put a temporary ban on the resolution and say we're going to opt back in automatically no matter what in 10 to 12 months, you have an obligation and an incentive to work on these types of regulations. They want robust regulations that fit Marquette, and I know it's possible, and I know we can do it, and I know the problems that are brought up are important because they're exactly what we need to resolve. So there's, you can even regulate the smell of it. I know that we talk about the adverse consequences and the negative consequences, but for instance, playing loud music essentially isn't against the law until it infringes upon somebody's rights. So until it infringes upon your neighbors. So you can regulate a smell. It's not illegal to grow cannabis in your home, but if it infringes on somebody else's nuisance, then you can regulate against that, and you can develop these laws. nuisance, then you can regulate against that, and you can develop these laws responsibly and with an adult perspective, and I think that's what they're asking of you. So, thank you, Margaret, for bringing that up. It is a profound point, and it's something that, that we can work on, to, to enable it to be a perfect, uh, perfect balance between a cottage industry and, um, prevent any, any sort of problems that would happen in the black market anyway. So, again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lynn Berry, 901 Champion Street, Marquette. Good evening, commissioners. I, um, have no vested interest in the cannabis industry at all. I admire the people coming that are currently for getting businesses of this nature started in Marquette, their enthusiasm. I don't think opting out is fearful. I think opting out is wise. You have a lot of volunteers here saying, "We'll educate you on this issue and what's happened elsewhere, and maybe if we could help the percentage of people in this county that are dependent on opioids, that could be a positive benefit." But I think the commissioners should opt out now and study it and decide if they want to opt in later. And I know there's financial benefits that could be had here, but I think you have to look at more than finances. And when I was growing up on the school, on the Marquette school bus, I would hear Marquette referred to as the queen city of the Upper Peninsula. And I have great reservation about becoming the cannabis center of the Upper Peninsula. So I appreciate you opting out and taking time to study the matter and then making a more informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cody Mayer, 2020 Longyear Ave., Department 2D. Briefly mentioned something about myself. I'm a student at NMU, I'm double majoring in economics and public administration. Something that economists like to say a lot is unintended consequences. Um, I truly do believe if the commission does opt out here today, that all the entrepreneurs and aspiring scientists that we have here in this community will leave. A community will, a community will struggle if the youth abandon said community. And there's a lot of youth here that are, want to be invested in growing this community, and especially in this industry, and I think we need to consider that. Because if you opt out, all everyone's gonna hear all week is that the city commission shut down weed establishments. That's all the people are gonna be hearing. I just want you to consider that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dustin Fulton, 508 West Barragan. Um, I mentioned earlier that I moved here from Humboldt County. If you're not familiar with Humboldt County, it used to supply about 90% of the marijuana in the US underground. Um, I spent a couple summers working on a farm there with 26,000 plants. They brought us up there in buses with blindfolds, didn't want us knowing where we were going. It's very unregulated, they were very kind to us, but it was very secretive. These people are burying millions of dollars in barrels in the ground. Now that it's been legalized and, um, the county knows what sites are medical and what are recreational, they have a much better job enforcing this. There are credit unions that are opening in Humboldt that accept the financial burden of that. People aren't burying money in barrels in the ground anymore. That's, that's dangerous. Anybody knows about that. That's where you hear about some of these, these murders happening, happening out there. Obviously, this is, this is new, there's gonna need to be some, some discussion. I, I just wanna keep that, that open. I think the wording in this ordinance isn't wise. Um, I, I don't remember his name, but he mentioned having a stipulation coming back to it in a certain amount of time. I think that would be a wise thing. I do wanna reiterate, this is happening, this is happening underground. I, I, everybody in this room wants to see regulations, we want to see this done right. Um, otherwise, it's, it's gonna be under the table, and it's, it's going to, to continue. But the financial aspect, I wanted to respond to that. Say that you, you can, the credit unions are accepting, credit unions are popping up in California to, to take them out on this massive amounts of money. Anyway, thank you.
Hi, Denise Lovelace again, 255 Orange Road. So I just wanted to expand. Um, like I said before, I was retired Air Force, so I have worked drugs, I've worked, um, so many missions with the Air Force, whether it be South America, Mexico, the borders, all borders in this country. So, um, again, I just wanted to reiterate, um, the unintended consequences, and if there is a way to wait and research and educate this issue, I would highly, I, I, there are no words, um, to express the frustration. So I would highly suggest that you wait and, um, learn as much about this issue, especially for the Upper Peninsula. Um, I also wanted to expand, there's currently the national emergency that President Trump has declared that, um, is in the court system and, um, more than likely going to the Supreme Court. So not only is, uh, whether the Mexican border is, um, south or not, it affects all of us. So it, it, it brings crime, it brings so many things to, um, our area. So I, I would just highly suggest waiting, learning, researching, um, between the drugs, the crime, um, just even the major cases recently, um, the major busts that have happened. So, um, that's, it's just an issue that I really hope you consider and think about, um, excessively. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gavin Gibson, uh, 525 North Third Street, Apartment 1. Normally when I come to these meetings, they are in regards to public land sales and taking away public land sales because we need to increase our tax base. Um, and here we have an opportunity to create jobs and create taxes, and we're taking those away. And, um, I'm just wondering what the overall theme of this committee is, because, again, we keep taking away the land and then taking away our job opportunities.
Mike Fishman again, 308 Rubeline Street, Unit 5. Thanks again for your time. Uh, I don't know what all these unintended consequences are. I would love for people to expand upon those. Uh, we have, as someone mentioned earlier, you know, 10 years of, of Oregon recreational, um, information that we can look back upon and try to model our potential policies after. Um, this research and, and waiting that people are talking about, we need, uh, we already have, um, all the information that we could possibly get from the other states that have already enacted similar policies. Um, I mean, we've got Canada, who as an entire country legalized almost on a whim. I mean, there was some planning, but, um, for the most part, they're just like, "Hey, everybody grow weed, smoke weed, sell weed, and we're gonna see what goes wrong." And frankly, in my opinion, that would be the best way, um, is to enact the policies as quick as possible, see how they affect, uh, the economy, see how they affect, um, the city itself, and, you know, see what goes wrong, see what goes right, and with that newfound knowledge, you're then able to enact, uh, better policy for the future. And I don't see a reason not to do that. And as far as training drug dogs or retraining them, I mean, my, my father used to train military drug dogs, and, uh, I've spoken with him about the issue. Um, as far as retraining dogs, uh, I don't see it, uh, as dire as Denise had mentioned earlier. If you would like to expand on that, I don't know if you have any, um, experience, Michael, with training drug dogs at all, or, I apologize. Uh, well, I'm, I'm done speaking, to be honest, but I just wanted to say a few things. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that not opting out is still waiting. You don't have to opt out and take away the opportunity from the people. Um, businesses, they can give it away as a gift, you know? Someone can go in and buy a t-shirt and be handed cannabis with it, and if you have it happen that way, the city will not see any of the money. I agree that you should probably just have it happen and see what happens, you know?
Name address, please.
Oh, my name is Perry Boyd, I live at 1937 Van Evra, sorry. But yeah, the people have spoken, and the people like myself want opportunities to work. Um, just across the Upper Peninsula, the, I think, the college in the Sioux is now claiming that they actually, the students can work hands-on with cannabis. Um, you attracted probably 500 students to this town, and you are now seeing their money. And who's to say we won't just leave if you're not giving us the opportunities that we thought we would have? Um, I don't see why you would opt out whenever the people have spoken. I also have seen a trend that only the older generation seem to be choosing to opt out, where the youth who is, you know, building this community is saying, "Let's opt in, we want this." So, it's just my vote. I also don't know what intended, unintended consequences you're talking about, because, you know, we have the information, we have the facts. It's decreasing opioid use, it's decreasing other drug use, opening up space in prisons and jails for, you know, real people that are doing real crimes to go into, and yeah, that's just my take.
Thank you.
Frank Jefferto, these are my opinions. We thank Ms. Smith for pulling this item off the February 11th consent agenda. All three female members felt the second work session ought to precede this item. They were surprised to see this on our agenda in the form of an ordinance to opt out. Anyone who attended a January 7th work session had to be surprised. The women were correct in that we're opting out prematurely, rushing a vote ahead of the requested second work session at which we can discuss criterion for locations, start doing the math and determine whether Mr. Stonehouse is correct in saying the numbers aren't there, which also sounded premature. Yes, the concerns as presented in the proposed ordinance were mentioned and understood. Yet the resulting proposal is barely recognizable from over 90% of what we discussed. I believe Ms. Reynolds said, quote, "The attorney and manager were asked by at least four members to give us more than one opinion. This request and the public were largely ignored." Confusing is the sentence that states this board shall review the ordinance within 60 days of the promulgation of final rules. If they fail to, this board shall review it no later than February 4th of next year. It ought to read at the soonest meeting after notice can be published. We handled this item well until this ordinance appeared out of nowhere, as happens rapidly on land use items. I'm against opting out and for using this time to work out what's in our control. February 11th, Mr. Campana gave us five reasons to opt out. Only the first made sense, the potential for conflict with state rules. His fear about grant applications had already been discounted at the work session, and that 250 cities have already opted out means nothing to us. We're not a flock of sheep up here. If they opt out, we'll enjoy a wider draw. He also mentioned a new governor who's surely more open-minded than Mr. Conservative was. As for three staff members being more knowledgeable, this board is expected to be as knowledgeable as anyone by now. To see this document from city staff in the February 11th packet worded as such was shocking, regardless of any validity. Much discussion had to have occurred behind the public's backs in their total disregard of our work session. Odd how our male members claim they don't want to rush, yet they're rushing to opt out. Ms. Hill said there needs to be a public process. So where was this process in setting up the ordinance? Not from the work session we held prior to this document's genesis, what went on behind the scenes by which only 5% of a work session was taken into account, and very contrary to the input we heard. No action ought to be taken until we've held a second, a second work session as requested, and Mr. Stonehouse has explained why the numbers aren't there. We have so much data to go on from other legal states.
Anyone else to address the commission?
Sean McGill, I live at 329 Spalding Hall at Northern Michigan University. Now, well, the unintended consequences of opting in have kind of been discussed. I think there are also a multitude of unintended consequences that come with opting out. Not only will the existing drug dealers that live within these communities thrive due to the fact that, uh, the use of marijuana has become legalized statewide, in addition, um, individuals, uh, as declared by the state law, are allowed to grow up to 12 plants, uh, within their residence. Now, I don't know how many of you necessarily know, uh, how much one plant can produce, but, um, on average, I'd say anywhere from one to three ounces, obviously depends on the plant. And now, if you have short flowering plants, it's gonna take about 12 weeks, give or take, um, from stem until you have your completed product. And within that time period, if you do the math on 12 plants, uh, say two ounces per plant, and, um, 12 weeks, that gives you two ounces to smoke every week. And I know quite a few people that medicate rather heavily, but I don't think I know a single person that smokes two ounces a week. And what's to say that they're not just going to go and sell their extra cannabis to, you know, their neighbor, or say their friend, or even gift their cannabis, which is legal under the law? So, the problem that arises with that is that these people are growing the plants legally, and nothing is stopping them, and they can very low-key just pass along their extra product to their friends or neighbors. With that comes a problem of, you know, cash, and it's the same problem that exists within the legal market, you just don't necessarily know where the cash is. It's not at the dispensary, um, it's at your drug dealer's house or wherever. Um, it's, it's really the same problem, it's just within the black market. Um, and I know I did read this article recently, I, I don't remember, uh, the name of the company, but there is a company that's working on, uh, designing and distributing, uh, unlabeled armored, that, transport vans, basically, um, to transport marijuana and cash for these businesses. And I know one of the states that they are working directly with is Michigan. So I think there are definitely other avenues to explore. Thank you.
Thank you.
It seems that people have the impression that if we don't opt out, there will be cannabis businesses next month, or in the next six months. But that's not true. First, someone has to apply and get a license from the state, and that's not gonna be until they have that all in place. Maybe it'll be by December. And judging from the time it has taken people to get licenses for the medical marijuana, there's another six months before that happens. And then, once they have a license from the state, only then can they apply for a license from the municipality, and that's where you'll have a say about that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Romeo Verno, live at 900 Norwood, uh, Street. Uh, this will be quick, but really, uh, I'm just thinking about, you know, the waiting game. If you, the Colorado was given this option, you know, Denver, let's say they waited, you know, the waiting game, who knows if that would've even have happened? Now, that's tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars that they would've made in tax revenue that they couldn't have made if they did, you know, choose to wait and, you know, something happened or whatever. And secondhand is also state legislators, you know? Michigan's huge, and the UP, it's, I don't know, I feel like, who knows if they've even spent a month themselves in the UP? They don't know how it works. Uh, Mayor Stonehouse, you were talking about how you were looking at downtown, what, uh, in the 70s, and so I'm assuming you've been here a while, you know how Marquette works, and who better to kind of, you know, figure out policies other than people who know how the community works, how, uh, everything connects, how every, all the businesses work together? Other than somebody who, you know, at a state level, they see hundreds of different, uh, communities that they need to make rules that apply for each and every one of them when in actuality, all of them need different, you know, rules, because all of them are different people, different businesses, different mayors, everything. So, really, uh, in actuality, you know, this is a, a shot to put Marquette on the map and, you know, just get the name out there of the city, and you kinda miss 100% of the shots you don't take, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, I'm Brandon Canfield, uh, three six nine Alger. I addressed the commission, uh, in January at one of the meetings on this topic. Uh, first, I'd like to echo Commissioner Fraser's, uh, desire for a year-round farmers' market. I know a lot of agricultural products aren't produced, uh, year-round, but some could be. I, I came before as a chemistry professor at Northern, excuse me, at Northern. I want to talk today, uh, as a parent, you know, a lot of concerns that were raised have to do with accessibility of, of some of these products to people who shouldn't have them. Uh, I'm personally not concerned with that at all. Um, you know, I'm comfortable walking with my daughter down Third Street, and we pass an elementary school, and then we pass a bar, and we pass another bar. We pass some coffee shops. This, this doesn't concern me if there was a, a Green Cross store or some other cannabis establishment. Uh, it's really no, no different from the rest of our community. I'm, I'm not, uh, not worried about that. Um, I, I'm kind of dismayed, this opting out. I, I don't really understand. Uh, it does feel like a rush to take action that, that feels like the debate is much more uh, outside of what the actual issue is, is just granting business licenses, uh, putting the risk on those business people, those entrepreneurs. Um, it feels like the debate is something that has already been settled, uh, by the electorate and following Prop One. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Now it's official. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Reynolds, or Mayor Protem?
I will make a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
We have a second with Commissioner Smith. Commissioner, or, uh, Mayor Protem Reynolds, anything further?
No, just easier.
Commissioner Smith, anything further comments?
Sure, I'll go first.
Well, comments, you're seconding the motion.
No comments on the motion itself.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passed with seven zero. And, uh, Commissioner Reynolds, who made the motion, floor is yours.
How fun. Um, okay, I have a lot of comments, but I'm gonna start off with a pretty basic question. I guess it's probably for you, Ron. Um, as we go through this process, and we hear a lot of things about time and rush and all those things, what is the drop dead di- deadline for opting out? What would be our deadline as a city that we're not just opted in?
Well, we certainly would want to opt out before the rules come down uh, from the, from the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, so, and they've got a year to do that.
Okay, so there's-
I mean, if we don't opt out and they come down with those rules, then, you know, at that point in time, they're gonna start accepting applications. So I think that was probably the, I think that's probably gonna be the longest deadline. That's why we put in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, that we review no later than that drop dead date, and that's where the February four deadline comes.
Okay, so there's not actually a deadline. It's just that we wanted to get this done before the state passes something.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So the rush is that we don't know.
Right. We know that they're working on the rules now. We don't know if they're, you know, I had a, heard a rumor at a seminar I went to that they may come out in March, but we don't really know. I know they've established some work groups themselves, so it's really kind of up in the air right now.
Okay. Um, so that, so far is my question. I have a lot of comments, and I'm just gonna make a couple right now and let the rest of the commissions speak because I think that I've talked about this quite at length, um, many times. So, um, one of the things that I've been looking into, and this is one of my, I guess, fears, as we talk about fears, is there, so far in the state of Michigan, there are ten stores that you go and buy a t-shirt from, you buy a chocolate from, and you get a ounce of weed, and weed, and it's unregulated. It's not something that we can do. They can still open a store, and you can buy a t-shirt, you can want to start a t-shirt shop, you can. We'll give you weed for free because you can gift it. So that's something that I continue to see too, and I've been reading it time and time again. There's Lansing, Detroit, Grand Rapids, and Grand Haven that have it at this point, four different stores. Um, so I've talked about this before, that I think that, that it's a little short-sighted for us to immediately opt out. I think we could come up with a better solution. I think we're smarter people than we're giving ourselves credit for. Um, but a couple things that just stood out for me with, from the audience members today, and I wanted to make mention and thank you for it because it's something I haven't came into my brain before. Um, and that includes staying here. I think it was Cameron that said, "People will stay here," and I think that's important because I grew up down here. I live here because I got this job, and I got a job in a law office, and that's why I'm here. And I wouldn't have been able to if I didn't have that opportunity. And we want our kids to stay here. We want Northern students to keep wanting to live here. So I, I forgot about that. I didn't think of that point, so I appreciated you making that one. Also, um, to a couple points that were made and one by Mr. Lorenzer, I think that even this ordinance, it does say we have a timeline and we're gonna go back and re- redo it, but I think it wouldn't be terrible to say it to something to be temporary. I'm gonna vote no on the opt-out, but I I think that it's still up for discussion because it says we will discuss it at this date. Not that we will potentially opt in or anything like that. It says we will discuss it again. Um, and the other, the other point that I had was, uh, Gavin Gibson as to the surplus age group with a hard time finding marijuana. Yes, right now, we, you can have marijuana. I can have it in my pocket right now. I don't, but I could. But I know if my mom's going, I don't. I know if my mom's going out, and she's had to try to go out, and having MS and trying to get marijuana at age sixty-five was a little bit difficult in getting into that age group. Um, because she moved here and didn't get her medical thing right away. Um, and the only other thing that I wanted to mention that somebody, two people said, is precisely to Leslie Williams' points. That's what I've been saying all along. That this is gonna happen, then you're gonna have the next thing, and then the next thing, and you're gonna have to go through this process of licensing through the state, through the city. It doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense in my brain to immediately opt out. Um, and I'm not gonna keep going and drilling on what I, what I continue to feel, other than I really still like chicken nuggets, Jessie, from McDonald's. I'm sorry. As you said that, it really made me sad inside.
So I keep coming back to the fact, you know what? Thank you guys for coming tonight. I really appreciate the public being part of this public process, coming to a public hearing. Honestly, we've got a lot of public hearings in City Commission, and most of them are not as well-attended as tonight, so I really appreciate you coming out and expressing your opinions and your thoughts. Um, I do know that sixty-two percent of city residents voted for Prop One, that they want, you know, marijuana, recreational marijuana opportunities, and I feel like as a, a city commissioner, we're often called to do, you know, what's best for the majority, what the majority want. And, and this is one of those cases when I feel like we really need to support what the residents have already voted for on a ballot. Um, I did live in Boulder, Colorado, when both, uh, medical and recreational marijuana were legalized, so I know someone said, I doubt anyone else has experience. I do have a similar experience, actually. Um, I, I am a little frustrated that in that first work session that's been referenced, um, there were several commissioners that kind of asked what opting in would look like, and that's something that we haven't seen yet. So still something I would like to see. Uh, I was a little upset that this was on the agenda the last go-round and was put forward to a public hearing because I don't think we were at that step yet. I wanted another work session, more options. Um, I do know that city staff does an excellent job, and this would be a tremendous amount of work. So I, I guess if the workload is too great, that we could consider, um, hiring a consultant, hiring additional legal help. I'm not saying that that's what we're gonna do, but those are things that I would rather talk about rather than just opting out. Um, because maybe we decided it is worth the expense of researching that opportunity before we just opt out by default. Um, I know the ordinance says that we would have to revisit by twenty twenty or after the state comes through, but potentially we could have two new commissioners at that time, and I don't want to wait that long, personally. So, um, I will be voting no on the opt-out. I would like to just kind of let things ride. Um, I don't know that we need to do a formal opt-in, but I'd rather just kind of let's see what the state does and, and not formally opt out at this point. Thank you.
I would like to say first of all that I do not believe that the city is against marijuana usage or marijuana establishments, nor am I. We're not trying to hinder them. We're not trying to stop them from coming in. The situation we have, the issue tonight is not about, as I said previously, growing it, possessing it, or using it. When you voted in November, that was granted to you. So you've got the ability to have it and to use it. That's not the, that's not the issue that we're here tonight to discuss. The feeling I get from most of you is you think we're trying to take that away from you. We are not trying to do that. To me, the issue tonight, the issue tonight is an administrative issue. It has to do with how the city is gonna put forth rules and regs concerning a problem that they see coming. Doesn't matter that it's marijuana establishments. It could be anything. But it's an administrative issue. That's what we're here to discuss. I am gonna vote to opt out because I do not want the city to become legally liable for something that might go wrong. You all know that the city, the state was supposed to have rules in place November sixth, and they didn't. We don't know when this is gonna happen, but it will happen. We have a governor that's trying to push this. It could happen soon. So other reasons are, again, if somebody, i- i- if situations develop, if somebody wants to come in, if they want to put a store in tomorrow, we are forced to accommodate them. But we don't have rules or regulations to govern that. Uh, that could lead to legal liabilities for the city. Now, if that's what you want to see, then we'll, then we won't opt out. But if, if you want to protect the city and give them some breathing room to get this ordinance in effect, we should opt out. The city is working on this. But you cannot do this overnight. It takes time. We've had three individuals within our city, and I'm gonna say this again, they have studied this as much or more than the commissioners have. We have the Director of Community Development, who steps forth planning and zoning. He says, "We're not ready to do this yet. It's gonna take time." And if you know anything about planning and zoning, you know that it just doesn't happen that quick. You have the Chief of Police, who says, "They're trying to adapt to it, but it just can't happen this soon, this fast, rather." You have to believe what he says. We have the City Attorney, who states that it's gonna take time. He has to write these things up. It's an administrative problem. It's not a marijuana problem. It's an administrative problem. And if the city screws up and they could be, again, sued, brought to court, become legally liable, liable. And I do not want to see the people of Marquette have to put up with that. As soon as the state says that, okay, we're in, we will accommodate that. There's no doubt that we will. We've stated that. I apologize to you for being so old that, you know, you think that I'm in a group that's against this, but if you want to know the truth, I've been around this since the late sixties. I am well aware of marijuana and other chemicals, so, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm aware of it. But I've also seen how it works, what you gotta do, and how you control it, and how you regulate it, and you just don't, okay, let's go. You just can't do that. So, and again, well, I'm not even, I'm not even gonna argue the point of, uh, the sixty-two percent that voted for it. That's another issue. It is legal, but I'm back to administrative problem here. So, thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Campana. I mean, we'll just wait for the state. I agree with opting out, just because it's not against what everybody's trying to figure out, but just wait for the state to figure it out. I mean, Colorado's got their own thing. Everybody says there's so much money, but right now, from what I understand, if you were to say, you know, take six months, I understand, but I've had many people call me and ask me, "What's my opinion?" And I said, "We're just gonna wait to see what happens." So if the state figures out first. My grandfather Peter White, back in the day, came here to start the co- start the company, started this business, great city, everything going, started banks, everything going, great community. I don't even know, like, people go to Colorado, you know, just for one purpose. I don't like that. I went to Colorado back in the nineties for skiing. It was great. It's a great community. Now people go there for a different reason. I don't want to see that. I mean, but, nothing against that, but again, wait for the state to figure out what they're gonna do, because if the city opts in and says, you know, here's the legal, duh, 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 and the state says, "Okay, this rule doesn't, this, this rule, this, this rule," it changes everything. So we're gonna wait for the state to see what goes on. Once the state figures out what they want to do, processes laws, anything, you open a business, a bar, a ski, whatever restaurant you want to open, whatever business you want to, there's rules. Here's the laws, you pass, you open business. It's fine. So once the state figures out what they want to do, we will opt back in. But until that time, we will opt out because there's no guarantees what the, what the laws are gonna make. We can always make improvements. So like the fireworks law. It's a national, it's a state law fireworks ordinance, but we had to make improvements there because people weren't happy with it. Be the same problem like Commissioner Campana said. There's just so many issues and too many different problems. They're gonna wait and see what happens first. Doesn't mean we can't opt back in. Some other time, by opting out, it means we have the option to opt back in when it's possible. And I agree, my daughter spoke for our work session, how it affects youth development, and so I agree just to wait and see what happens.
Thank you, everyone. This is really great. Um, as painful and anxious as everyone was standing at, um, uh, you may have been standing at the microphone, that's the most important thing we can do as citizens, is speak up. So thank you very much. I'm a little nervous. Um, so, um, uh, there's a, this is available on the web. Let me get the right, the Michigan Municipal League has, um, some, uh, a white paper that they wrote about. Um, this is about the prop itself, not about, but the proposition was passed, the language and the proposition. Been spending time with this. Um, so and one of the things it says, um, "Commercialization of mar- medical, of recreational marijuana is at least a year away," this is when the law passed, "because of the state needing to set up the process." So there, you're right, the state, the state does need to do this. And I, I have also heard that this, that, that with the new leadership, the state is interested in having it done certainly as best they can before December. So we know it's coming. We know this administration is working towards making it happen. So in that context then, um, the, 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 there's fourteen pages in this document, and a lot of it is about how the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana statutes, um, differ on their edges, and so that's a challenge for the businesses to be established and the regulations that we as, um, local government have to put into place. There's even a three-page chart explaining what all the differences are. So, um, and that's something that the state has to work out, but also us. And, um, so I understand that there's things that need to be worked out. That said, um, I think that Commissioner Smith's idea of hiring someone to help us, or, or and/or hiring someone to help us figure out the public process of com- having the conversation may be a useful use of city dollars, and I think that's worth discussing, um, in further. Um, and then the thing I really don't understand, still, even having read the fourteen pages, what is the liability that the city would take on if we opted in? Or we didn't, sorry, if we didn't opt out? Could someone please explain to me, what is the liability if we don't opt out?
Well, first of all, I've never made the statement that we suffer any liability or are exposed to any liability. I think the point is if we don't opt out and the state uh, comes up with rules and regulations, and then they, they've indicated in the statute, I believe, that begins accepting applications at that point. And if they do, those applications, once they're approved by the state, then they come to, they go to the city for their, uh, to see if they're in compliance with city zoning and other rules and regulations that are in effect at that time. And that's where we would be at risk in terms of, maybe this commission doesn't want a business, a grow operation, or a microbusiness, or some kind of other, uh, facility in a certain location. Well, we don't have a zoning ordinance that says you can't- Well, we don't have a zoning ordinance that says you can't do it in that location. If it meets all of the zoning rules for that location, then they can, they could operate in that, that particular district. So, that's the real danger. This is, as I think Commissioner Campana said, this is really an administrative thing. We do this with all of our ordinances. We did this with the short-term rentals. I mean, we, we had public forums and hearings before we even drafted an ordinance. But in this particular case, I could have an ordinance for you at the next meeting. That's not the issue. You just have to tell me where you want them, how many you want, and, uh, and, and what types of businesses. There are six different businesses. You tell me what they are, where you want them, and when you want them. We'll put the ordinance together. We don't need a consultant for that. And then the zoning is a little bit more complicated because you'll have to then tell the zoning people where you want those, uh, different businesses in what areas, so they can write them into the land development code. But that's not going to, that's not the problem. The problem is administratively, if we, if we wait, and I should say, almost 300 communities have figured the same thing out, and they've opted out. If we wait and the state comes down with rules in the meantime, then we accept applications based on what we have in, in effect at the, ordinance-wise, in effect at the time of the application.
So, does that mean that if we, um, that we'd have to accept the state rules wholesale and not have any specific rules for Marquette? I think that's what you're saying.
I'm saying that's what the statute says. It says that if they, they, when they, when we notify, Laura notifies us that this business wants to do business in the city, we have to determine whether they're in compliance with an ordinance consistent with the new act in effect at the time of the application. And so, what I'm saying to you is, as a commission, you can either do it through work sessions or public forums, or however you want to do it. But I assume you want public input on where these businesses ought to be located, what kinds of businesses you want in the city of the six, maybe all of them, and, and also, you know, how many of each? You know, you, do you want, you know, so many retails and so many grow operations, so many of the different types of businesses? Those are only things that, you know, I can't put those in without you.
And then...
You need to tell me.
Okay, so, we're, we, um, just trying to get the chain correct here. So, when you can get a business license, as, um, someone said, you have to get the state license first. It also says, "You can't get a state license unless you have a medical marijuana license in the first 24 months." Right? I mean, that's, that's what I read in here. You, you can't get a recreational, and that's just retail, though. That's not, there's all the other ways.
That's retail, and that's for, that might be a microbusiness, too.
Um, there's other, right, there's all the other kinds of businesses, and we just jumped to retail, and there's, usually the money's not in retail, it's somewhere else. So, okay, so, state rules come down, person applies for a license, they have to go through that process. Then, um, Marquette, City Marquette decides where and how many, and maybe a few other things. So, why don't we have that on the table right now? Why don't, how does, how, I'm brand new here. How, how do we decide how to have public input sessions? What is the process to do that? Because I don't know.
Typically, what you've done with other ordinances is you've either had work sessions or public forums. You did that with the short-term rentals.
Who, who decides that, though?
The commission.
So, could I, right now, make a proposal that we have, I, 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 I...
Of course.
I just, okay, um, so, and then, uh, the mayor just pointed out, we were given a, um, flowchart of the things that have to happen, but I'm not sure, has the public seen that flowchart? Okay, so, there's a flowchart as well on how this all works.
And that's, that's certainly available, I mean, we could make that available to the public. That's, there's nothing, that's typically how we do an ordinance, the process.
So, I think part of everyone's concern is that we just don't know how this all works. And so, I think the more we can explain the process, the more everyone, because as you've heard, I think we're gonna, we're gonna get there, it's just understanding the process. So, yeah, but when I don't know what the public process is, it makes it really hard to vote for something. And that's where I'm at, and I'll stop.
Mr. Schlegel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great input, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. We just, the only issue I'm having, it just got nailed right there. Five and a half years on Planning Commission, you, the reason I did it was to understand how the community works. Why, why do we have a planner? Why do we have people that are volunteering their time to work through a process that is dictated by the state to, um, to run a community, to do, um, you know, to, to open up a business, to, to go ahead and, and do land use, uh, development, to go ahead and set up zoning? We just went through a massive land code development, or land development code revision. And, and you want to talk about boring, guys. I mean, forget about it. But it had to be done. It was something we had to update. Um, they did a great job on it. The zoning, it's all about, it's that type of stuff that I don't want people below the bridge dictating how we're going to set up our own pot regulations. Okay? Now, with that being said, you've got marijuana grower, you've got marijuana processor, marijuana secure transporter, safety compliance facilitator, or facility, retailer and microbusinesses. All I'm hearing here is, "Let's start selling some pot." Okay? So, with these hot buttons that we need to figure out first, we need to sit and say, "How many of each one of these do we want?" And when I look at this, that's the only thing that I'm, I'm concerned about. I'm not afraid of marijuana, um, I'm not even concerned. We're not talking about green smoke here as much as we are edibles and things like that, right? We're going to have some green smoke, that's all fine and dandy. But I know the minute that we let the state say, "Okay, we don't have a say in this", California manufacturer is going to come in, buy up Shopko, and start to knock it out of the park. Okay, so that's what we don't need to have happen. We don't need to have, um, these businesses that have already pledged, not only come to Michigan, but all these other ones that are on the fence, come in and, and swoop up what we're trying to do, okay? You've got about 50, 60 small business owners in here, it sounds like, or at least people that want to be. If you ever get through the process, go through an SBA loan, reconsider. Maybe buy into somebody else that's done the work for you. But anyway, my point is, um, it's a process. Everything is a process, and we have to be able to, to do this according to Marquette's standards. I don't care about the 200 and other, other 80 whatevers. I don't care, the state's going to come up with this, with this basketball worth of regulations that everybody's going to have to abide by. It's, it's the low-hanging fruit. It's the simple stuff. Then, if we go to a certain, you know, they give us the regulations and the rules. The ci, the City of Marquette then is obligated to say, "Where does this fit? How many do we need? How many do we need? Nobody said anything about that. Ah, take it back." Maria, raise your hand.
Mariah.
Mariah, I'm sorry. Thank you for bringing up something that has to do with this when it comes to mixed use and things along those lines that are very important to the city, and where these pieces could actually be incorporated. Whether it's industrial, mixed-use, residential, all these things are important. We owe it to our, our neighbors, you know. I can tell you right now, there's three or four spots that I can drive by every day in Marquette because I, I am, I scour the town all the time, and I know that they're growing there because it stinks. And, and it, and it, I'm like, "Whoa, there's one", you know, and I, and it's fine because they can do it, so be it. If it's going to offend their neighbors, then that's something that we need to address, right? Maybe put some extra filters in. There's all kinds of technology for that. I'm an insulator, okay? I don't expect you guys to come and tell me how to insulate, or how, how building science works in the marijuana industry. Although, I did work with a big company that was working in a small community in the UP here, trying as hard as they could to get a, a legal grow operation going, million-dollar-plus operation, probably closer to 2.5, all said and done. They jumped ship because Michigan was slow. They went to Arizona overnight, boom, gone. And that's the stuff where, even if they would've, you know, been able to do it, they had, there was only so much they could transfer and all this stuff down to the dispensaries and where it's going to happen. My point is, and I'm sorry to ramble, there's little details that are very important to the City of Marquette that we need to work on for the citizens of Marquette. That's the only reason that I want to vote, I want to opt out, because it's going to give us that time without being held if tomorrow the State of Michigan drops a pile of crap in our lap that we have to abide by without having our own say in it.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Uh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protan Reynolds.
I just wanted to make one little follow-up comment to Commissioner Hill's comment about the public process. I, I agree, but I'd like to, and maybe when going forward with this, I don't know if the other commissioners would agree. I think we know where this is going to fall and how it's going to go down, but we, this was passed in November. We had our first constituents come forward to us in December talking about this. Last month this brought up, and we still haven't talked about where the public comes in. And I think that that's probably where they're mostly feeling left out. Everybody I run into are like, they don't understand when they get to be a part of it. I think we could have already been having them a part of this conversation, other than having to come and sit in our meetings, having public forums and that kind of thing. So, and I'm willing to take that extra time as a commissioner to do that, so that's the only, I'd like that, making sure we're doing that going forward.
Mr. Schlegel.
Thank you. Got a little hot there, sorry about that. My other question, I guess, for city staff is, if we opt out, can we continue to move forward with work sessions to get public input? Is there any reason why we can't have work sessions to shorten that timeframe between when the state gives us our stuff and when we gotta, and we want to fire things up?
Absolutely not. I think that's what other communities are doing. Royal Oak, for example, is doing that very thing. They opted out for the same rule reasons that I've kind of given you tonight, but they've gone ahead now with the, they're going to have their first work session. They want to see what the public wants. And that makes sense, and there's no reason you can't do, move forward with that.
Okay. And the reason I ask that question is because we got to know, we got to know, you guys have knowledge I don't have. Again, going back to the analogy there. If, if there's a sweet spot, is it five, is it 10? Is it open up as many as you want and cannibalize the other guys out until it's, it's done? As far as, you know, the manuf, or the retails, retailer storefronts, is it, um, you know, there's just a number of things that we can pay attention to and, and move forward. So, I guess what I would be in favor of is going ahead and opting out. I would also like to consider putting in something similar to what Mr. Lorenzer said with a, an opt-back-in cap, maybe at six months, or I'd like to see three months, faster the better, but I understand how the process works. So, going ahead and putting a, a, a timeline that we have to meet in order to satisfy what you guys are talking about, I think that's important. And a, and continue to go on and at least have one, if not two, more, um, planning sessions or, or work sessions that are going to allow us, you know, we don't have, and I said this at the last meeting, we don't interact with each other hardly at all outside of these chambers. Good friends because we're sitting up here and we're trying to do what's right for the community. We don't have the ability to sit around and govern and make policy because it's not what we're supposed to do, right? We're here for you guys. So, without your input, without the stuff that you're telling us you're so good at, what are we going to do? And that's all, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Mr. Campana.
Just a short comment, and I want to ask the City Attorney this. I want to bring this point forward. Is not the city staff presently working on an ordinance to, um, pass that'll, that'll allow the establishment of marijuana facilities? I mean, you are working to have an ordinance to govern this.
Yeah, we're working on the ordinance. There's two ordinances, really. There's going to be the ordinance to establish marijuana businesses, if that's what the commission wants to do, that'll be up to the commission. And then there's, we're also working on changes to the land development code, identifying those areas which will have to be revised, and that'll go through the Planning Commission, I assume, and through this commission. So, there's that. And then there's the application process, but the actual documents are pretty simple. It's the, the answers we don't have, and that's where the commission comes in.
Well, just so that we all know that we're, the city is not stonewalling here. They are, you know, moving forward on this.
Right.
I mean, even if we opt out, we're still working on it.
Oh, yeah. It hasn't changed.
That, to me, is an important point. Thank you.
Right, and, and I, the city staff, I, I will, is diligently working on this, but the public process is not clear. I'm on the commission and I don't know what the public process is. And so, I understand now that it's my, apparently, my obligation to make that clear. Well, we're going to have work sessions. I commit to that. Um, work sessions are where we can actually talk, no decisions are made, but we can actually share information. But yes, we need you to bring us information about, um, you know, when it works in Oregon, this is what happens. And, um, this is what they found about moving things out of the black market. I know that's a real challenge with pricing. They're just going to underprice you, even though it's, you know, and, and I'm reading about how that is a big problem in California because there's an excess of supply, and so they just sell it under the table. But then, but I, I also hear loud and clear that the quality control and the transport and that kind of stuff is, is going to be part of this conversation, and we don't know anything about that. I mean, we all think we know something about retail because we all buy stuff, but what do we, you know, we probably don't know how to run a business either. So, um, I, I, I go back to, um, as a, as a, as a city, the staff has obligations, that they are, they are very good about meeting those obligations on compliance with legalities, and that's what we need them to do. But I, um, I, I want to have a way to figure out what the public process is, so we can have those together and then figure this out together as we move forward with this. And I like the idea of some kind of timeframe that's not just reactive to the state, but is, again, one that we can develop. I, I want to, um, follow that idea as well.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Frazier.
I agree with what Ray also said. I mean, it's kind of like short-term rentals. It's just, we had, rental houses have been around town forever. Rental business has been around forever, but then the state said, "Okay, here's short-term rentals. We had to change everything." "Okay, this person's graphite, this person's graphite", we didn't know, so, by opting out, the, the city has time to work on this together, get public input, work hard on this, and get everybody's feeling, and make sure we get everything in place, so when the state says, "Okay, here are the rules", we can say, "Okay, we've worked hard on this. Staff has worked the butt off. We've got lots of public input on this. We'll figure it out. We'll make it rules. Be done." So, when the state comes to the point and says, "Okay, we're going to legalize it. Here are the rules", we can say, "Okay, we've done our hard work. We've done our homework. Here's the process. We'll have it ready to go. We're ready to go." Well, we're, it's not really going to work. We're going to work on it. We're not going to just throw it off. We're not going to work anymore. We want to continue working on it. Want to work hard on this. We don't, we don't use, lose, excuse me, lose youth. That's not the point. I have a friend, went to school at University of Michigan, he had a great degree, and a friend of mine was starting a business, same company. "Oh, he could do an interior". He said, "No, sorry, we're not fully operated yet. When we operate, we can do that, but right now, we can't", so he lives in Chicago now. Good guy, but, "Sorry, just didn't work out." So, the thing is, so if you guys are saying, "I'm op, I'm going to graduate in a year or two. I want to work for this business", there's no guarantees in comparison. It takes six months or a year before they actually open. So, like everybody says, if we opt out now, we continue doing our homework, and then when it comes time to it, we'll, we'll be in place and ready to go.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none, I guess it's my time to take a swing at the ball. Staff was directed to begin to do preliminary work on a marijuana ordinance following the commission's work session of at least a month ago. And what we're seeing is that preliminary work. You really are getting a great education tonight. You're getting a great education as people willing to stand up and talk about what you believe in. You're getting a great education as to how government works. And the aspect that I really want you to carry home is that it's complicated. You simply can't say, "We're going to open up the City of Marquette tomorrow. We're all going to sell marijuana and be happy." Life doesn't work like that. We have to put together a frame and ordinance, that ordinance needs to be very specific. It needs to address all of the issues that our city thinks are important. And, for example, that list of six different types of businesses that, that can be, be out there. We need to say, "We want this one. We don't want this one. We need this one. We don't need this one." All of that plays into, how many places should we have? That's a decision we need to make. Should, is there places where they should be and shouldn't be? Those are all decisions made in zoning and government. And then you finally produce a document that is called an ordinance, and we go through the same little hearing process we just did here, the same public input process. And then that becomes the way the City of Marquette will enact or support legislatively the state requirement for marijuana sales. We do a lot of public input with that. Anybody that may have been here when we did the food truck one of a couple of years ago, that was a long, lengthy document. It was a lengthy- It was a lengthy period of public input. How many trucks can we have, where can they go, can I park in front of my business, can't they park? When we did the Airbnb one, again, lots of public input to it, principally doing it two different ways. Public work sessions, which is where the commission meets more in a, a, um, a less structured setting, not quite as formal, and where the public has an opportunity to comment, as you did tonight, and make specific suggestions, where we do public forums that are usually held in Lakeview Arena. And again, specific questions, specific comments, going to a specific objective. And that allows a huge amount of public input. The university ought to be a major player in that, and not just the students. Frankly, Northern Michigan University with its, its marijuana program ought to be leading the pack on this. We ought to have university engagement with us as we build towards this model, uh, ordinance. And can we lead the state with it? Yes, I think we can. I think we have a unique opportunity of working together with the university to produce a document that would be literally state standard. So we can do that. We've gotta get Northern to participate, though, and I don't mean just at the student side, I mean at the, the staff side and the hierarchy, because right now they're, they're opting out. The university has opted out of, of the marijuana thing, you know that. They have opted out. They refuse to have it on campus, they refuse to allow the use of it on campus. That's called opting out. So, if your questions are being directed at us as to why the city of Marquette isn't going quicker, you might ask the same question of the university, why aren't you going at all? Because it's a difficult, uh, it's a difficult issue. Their argument's going to be the same as you hear sometimes with marijuana. Can't do it, it's a level-one, schedule-one drug, and if we use that, somebody might take away our grant money. And I think it was one of the folks that testified tonight, or spoke tonight, who said, there's never been a case in the world where that's ever happened. So clearly that becomes a little bit of blue smoke and mirrors, as the old magicians would use. Comment made on the Sioux, starting a, a similar program. I think the city of Sioux same re-opted out last weekend. Doing it and seeing what happens isn't a plan. That make sense? That's not a plan, just doing it and seeing what happens isn't a plan and sorting it out later. Uh, that's, you go in with what you think will be. Because somebody else made the comment, success is doing things the right way. And that's what the city would desire to do. Do it the right way, be successful, we know what's coming, we know we're gonna do it, the commitment is here to do that. And I don't think you found one comment from anybody up at this table that was anything but supportive of the ultimate goal. And that's really what we have to fight for. That's it. Any other commissioners? We've kinda talked this one out, is it time for a motion? You're up to bat, Dave.
I would like to make the motion that, following this public hearing, we adopt ordinance number 675, amending the city code to prohibit recreational marijuana establishments within the city pursuant to the Michigan Recreation and Taxation of Marijuana Act of 2018.
Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Frazier.
Second.
Commissioner Campana, any comments?
I said them all.
Commissioner Frazier?
I said it all too, let's just get time to work on it.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Schlegel?
So this is gonna, this is gonna change my vote completely, because there's no stipulation as far as timings. There's, there've been some requests made here tonight, um, and, uh, work sessions and stuff that could be done. Um, and I want it to be known as to why I'm changing my vote, because there is none of that verbiage in there that, that seems so, um, uh, needed to be in place for the community members that are speaking out here, especially tonight.
I thought there was verbiage that said we would review on Feb, or not later, not earlier than February 4.
February 4, and that is how far after the?
Sixty days, isn't that?
It's sixty days after the one-year anniversary of the enactment.
And is there any reason for us to, we have to say anything about work sessions?
Not in an ordinance, not in an ordinance.
Comment from the chair. There is nothing to preclude us from making a second motion establishing a requirement for a given number of ord, of, of public work sessions to be held. Or directing management, directing the city manager to establish a schedule of ordinances to, of, of, uh, public, of public work sessions to be held and/or community forums. And then see what, what comes back from that.
I am not like. I, I, I'd like to see at least two more work sessions on this. I know we could have a hundred, but I feel that once we get the right people in the room, instead of not showing up for the work sessions and giving, giving us your input, I think your public comment tonight was great, but long. Um, and, and it's important that we hear that, we should've heard that probably at our last work session, but regardless. So I would, I would like to add that we have a minimum of two, uh, work sessions.
How about as a second comment?
As a second?
Second motion.
Should I wait to make that then, until we're done voting on the first?
I would do that. Any other comments? I'm sorry.
Your honor. So we're gonna have two work sessions, is what you're asking? Why not just have one and then put the stipulation, we'll decide at that point if we need to have another? I hate to have two of, the second one being a not needed one.
Your honor, this is actually a separate question, this is not part of the ordinance. I think that what Commissioner Schlegel was gonna do was make that as a second motion after the vote on the ordinance had taken place.
Okay.
And so I think, just to remind the mayor, this is a roll call.
I'll back off.
This would be a roll call. Please conduct the roll call, Mr. Clerk. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
No.
Mayor Stonehouse? Uh, yes. The, uh, motion carries four-two-three. That brings us down to the consent agenda.
I think Commissioner Schlegel was gonna make a motion.
I'll, I'll wake up here. You have a motion, Commissioner Schlegel.
Can you, can you help me with the verbiage on it? I, I don't have... I would like to make a motion that we have a minimum of two work sessions, um, with the public to review... The marijuana regulations that will be set forth with the, um, said, what, ordinance? Is that all right?
Yeah, in connection with, in connection with the ordinance, that's fine.
Motion is made, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Hill?
Second.
Commissioner Schlegel, further comments?
I just think that this is necessary, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta pick your brains.
Absolutely. Commissioner Hill?
Um, I want clarification, maybe just one more time, on the difference between a public forum and a work session? Is there a legal difference to, that may have one be, have a different set of information than the other?
No.
Mayor says no.
Well, the commissioners probably know this better than I do, but, uh, a work session, of course, the commission convenes and discusses, and there's a public comment portion, but in a public forum, it's more focused on the public, commission's sitting back and listening to the public, uh, as, as opposed to them directing the discussion and then having the public comment. It's more like the people comment more than the commissioners.
Friendly amendment, friendly amendment to, to your, your motion?
I think that's fair, yeah, I think that that might be fair, even if we did one and one, one work session and one public forum in regards to the, uh, upcoming marijuana regulations.
So that's a revised motion, then? Uh, second, Hill?
Second.
Schlegel for further comment?
Nope.
Commissioner Hill?
Sounds good.
Any other commissioner? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes seven-zero. My apologies for trying to, forgetting that. That brings us to the consent agenda, number seven. Commissioners, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mayor Protem Reynolds?
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Is, can I have a second? Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Reynolds, further comment?
Nothing further.
Hearing none, Commissioner Frazier? Hearing none. All those, any other commissioners? We're gonna have to wait for a vote. Okay, any other commissioners? Hearing none, will not vote until she returns. You wanna vote twice?
Did you vote? Did, did you go? You still have a quorum. You still have a quorum. Oh, yeah, you still have a quorum, you can, you can call the vote.
All those, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any commissioner opposed to the motion signify by saying no. Motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to Lighthouse Park reuse plan. Clerk, if you would please read the, uh, read the background.
Thank you, mayor. The city commission adopted the Lighthouse property land use plan at its January 29th, 2018 regular meeting. The plan included a conceptual site plan that stakeholders, community members, committees, boards, staff, and the city commission all felt comfortable with. On April 9th, 2018, the city commission reallocated $1 million of capital improvement funding from College Avenue to the Lighthouse Park project. The community development department was enlisted to draft a design for the multi-use pathway based upon the conceptual site plan included in the adopted land use plan. Realities on the site, including elevation, sightlines, proximity to structures, and several mature trees, including two 48-inch diameter oak trees estimated to be over 200 years old, dictated that to follow the conceptual site plan within the adopted land use plan, the pump house would have to be removed or relocated. The design was then submitted to the State of Michigan Historic Preservation Office, SHPO, for approval as required by the deed from the United States Coast Guard. The SHPO determined the pump house to be historic, and as such, it could not be demolished or relocated. The SHPO determination led to a city commission work session on November 1, 2018, at the former Coast Guard Station House, to discuss all options. This discussion led to the determination that the preferred route for a relocation of the multi-use pathway that met national standards and preserved the legacy of the park was along Coast Guard Road right-of-way. The community development department was enlisted to draft a design based upon input received at the work session and on subsequent direction from the city manager. The design was internally reviewed by police, fire, planning, engineering, and public works to ensure that the design was safe, accessible, and able to be maintained, both the park and adjoining areas and streets. The design was recommended for approval by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board at their December 17th, 2018 regular meeting, after being reviewed at their regular meeting the previous month. The design was then presented to the planning commission at their January 8th, 2019 regular meeting, and the issue was postponed in order to facilitate further discussion. The design was again reviewed by the planning commission at the February 5th meeting, and discussion concluded with the following action. It was moved by M. Larson, seconded by E. Brooks, and carried five to three, that after conducting a public hearing and review of the supporting materials provided for 01-PPR-01-19, the planning commission finds that the proposed plan does not fit the character and extent of the neighborhood or fit with the community master plan, and denies approval of the project. City staff finds the plan to be consistent with the community master plan in that it creates public park and green space, increases access to the shoreline, and will increase the safety of the adjacent public multi-use path. Staff also finds the plan to be consistent with the Parks and Recreation master plan in that it takes care of what we have, provides health and wellness opportunities, provides safe recreation spaces for families, and because paved pathways were rated as the second highest priority facilities in the citizen survey, while historic sites and museums were rated fourth highest. During the planning commission meeting, a majority of their discussion was focused on matters of opinion regarding the placement of a parking lot versus keeping that portion of the park open for other uses. Staff recommends continued consideration for the parking lot due to the input received during the city commission work session and subsequent direction from the city manager. As well, the adopted Lighthouse Park plan did not prescribe any additional amenities for the park, such as playground equipment, due to the intent of keeping the park as a small historic location. Fiscal effect, there is sufficient funding for this project in the 2018 capital improvement plan budget. Recommendation, approve the project plan for Lighthouse Park per the attached design, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Ma'am, you had requested, Elizabeth, yeah, you had requested to speak?
Ellen.
Ellen. My apologies.
That's okay, forgive me, I'm green at this process, so, uh, my name is Ellen Weigarten, I live at 612 High Street, and I am the new chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Um, I'd like to make clear that the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has reviewed the initial plan and the revised plan and given its wholehearted approval. It is in keeping with the master plan that was just completed and approved. The reiteration that I would like to give is that the bike trails are number two in our, um, citizen survey, and the safety that is afforded our participants in the city and on the trails, will be, will be addressed by separating the road and the trail. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Brum? Okay. Uh, I think, Mr. Verdo?
Frank Verito, these are my opinions. This is not what we wanted, and not what a majority of the planning commission wanted either. As you've just heard Red quote, "The planning commission finds that the proposed plan does not fit the character and extent of the neighborhood or fit with the community master plan, and denies the approval of the project on a five-to-three vote." It's sickening to see that city staff disregarded this recommendation, as well as input at a work session and twice here during public comments. The drawing plainly depicts how the proposal would tarnish the character of the neighborhood, largely to provide nine parking spaces for the Maritime Museum, which Mr. Stonehouse is so conveniently associated with. To facilitate those nine spaces, and only those nine spaces, is an oval loop with a tight turn at the south end. The Lake Shore Task Force recommended no development east of the trail, which the Lighthouse Park lot would not only violate, but poses a safety hazard.
I have a point of order, your honor, I have a point of, yes. Uh, your honor, over here. The speaker said that it's to your benefit to have the parking lot. And I, I thought you, this was explained, that you do not have an interest in this. So, I don't want the people out there to think that you have a vested interest in the development of this park. That has to be made clear.
Thank you. Mr. Verdo, your time will not be penalized for this discussion. Mr. Verdo, please. Attorney, would you please reassure people, based on the charter, that as a volunteer working with the Maritime Museum, I must vote regarding all issues that come in front of us, I guess?
I'll say two things, your honor. First of all, I've determined you do not have a conflict of interest in, because of your relationship with the Maritime Museum. And secondly, that this is a, this is really free speech, he can say it, whether it's true or not, that's just the way it is. He'll have to take those consequences, but you do not have a conflict.
Oh, thank you for making that clear to everybody. Mr. Verdo, please proceed.
Okay, and I did not say that. The Lake Shore Task Force recommended no development east of the trail, which the Lighthouse Park lot would not only violate, but poses a safety hazard, as vehicles would cross the increasingly busy trail to access the lot. Ideally, the trail ought to run east of the lot unless we're told why this pump house is of such historic value. Here we have to hold off pending further discussion with the historic preservation folks. The staff is thanked for recognizing the historic value of the ancient oaks. This is, however, no excuse to propose covering a critical corner of our Lake Shore district with asphalt on top of asphalt, and the buffer of trees wiped out is depicted on the drawing, which illustrates how this would harm the character of the neighborhood. The nine Maritime Museum spaces can be accessed on the current road with the trail run east of that, running east of that. Cars can back out from those spaces just as conveniently and leave the way they entered. That loop of asphalt is entirely unnecessary and suggests... That loop of asphalt is entirely unnecessary and suggests our latest example of someone being so fixated on a single cause he lost sight of the forest through the trees. The space is better used for future outdoor exhibits and room for plowed snow. Members who are able to read a drawing will see how my alternative keeps more of our public space pervious. It's egregious to destroy or even compromise our wooded buffer for a loop to access only nine stalls. I recall no previous discussion of this loop. In fact, efforts were exerted to express the value of the wooded buffer of trees adjacent to Coast Guard Park Road. You're asked to visualize how the ambiance would be diminished for trail users by destroying that buffer. Why does our public continue not to be heard, and not the Planning Commission either in this case? Why must we continue to suffer injury from an apparent inability or unwillingness to use our most precious public spaces optimally? Please study the drawing more carefully, specifically the asphalted southeast corner. This is a replay of the marijuana work session where nothing we said made a bit of difference.
Thank you. I think next on the list is Ms. Campy.
I think I need some marijuana. Okay, Lois Campy, 612 East Michigan Street. I live on the corner of East Michigan and Coast Guard Road, so I'm adamantly opposed to the closing of Coast Guard Road, for all the reasons those of us who are affected have been saying. Closing the road eliminates access to my home, hinders the flow of traffic, and causes congestion of parking at McCarty's Cove. Then there's the issue of emergency services. This is a historical area and should be treated as such and preserved. The road is part of this historical property and should be maintained. Our homes are 150 years old and a part of this history. Once the plan was drastically changed, we were not informed, and there has been some deception, i.e., the rock is protected. Telling the Planning Commission they had to pass the plan or a nonexisting grant in the amount of $375,000 would be lost. And we are told the bike path can't go through the park because of protected trees. We thought the trees were protected by some historical law. I called the DNR, and the gentlemen I talked to chuckled when I told them about the protected trees. This whole plan has not been well thought out, and for some reason, there seems to be a rush. I am curious as to who the people are that are demanding the property be developed immediately. Taxpayers are not in favor of spending millions on this project. Pardon me. According to the plan, the Maritime Museum is the main benefactor of this plan. The idea that seven people can decide to close a road that doesn't affect them is a concern. To say the least, this plan turns our lives upside down. Those of us who live in the area aren't the only ones affected. This needs to be rethought from a logical standpoint. Even the Planning Commission could not vote for this plan. Maintain the buildings and grounds. The parking lot doesn't need to be paved. And above all, keep the road as is. Remove the trees and move the bike path to the east. The road is necessary for the area and is a part of our history. People first, and then bikes and trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Martha Fitzgerald, please.
Hi, I'm Martha Fitzgerald. I live at 540 East Michigan Street. I've been on that area since 1981, I guess, but my main thing, without overstudying it, is that it is a beautiful public park that I feel like I've waited my whole adult life in Marquette to have it become a city park, and that my neighbors on my side of Lake Shore are hopeful that it will become a park where people feel welcome to visit. I again say, take the damn fence down. I hate that fence, the chain-link fence in there. Put up some parking, put up some picnic tables, welcome people. Even if we go slowly, make movement toward it being embraced as one of our city parks. I, I like the plan for the way it's moved. I understand argument against it, you know, with the bike path going where Coast Guard Road is, and I, I'm not in argument with what the current plan is, but I also just say, let's get that park as one of our city parks, because I've lived there. One of the reasons I've lived on that block is because of where that location is, and it's a city property that should, citizens should feel welcome at, and so I'm in favor of moving forward on it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson.
Walt Anderson, 430 North Lake Shore Boulevard, Marquette. We all have passionate passions. Has City Commissioners, you're passionate on the new Coast Guard Park and the old Maritime Museum. Our neighborhood is passionate about the old McCarty's Cove Park, a year-round park, the old Maritime Museum, a seasonal museum, the old Michigan Street, a year-round road, the old Arch Street, a year-round road, the new Coast Guard property, a seasonal park, the old Coast Guard Road, a year-round connecting street. We're most passionate about that. I am the chair of the Traffic and Parking Committee. We, where's your study on the Coast Guard Road, okay, concerning vehicles, bikes, and pedestrians? There isn't one that I know of, okay? Where's your study for the bikes and pedestrians on the sidewalk on Lake Shore Boulevard? Arch Street, Michigan Street, Lake Shore Boulevard, and Coast Guard Road make up a full city block. How many people are bypassing the bike path between the new Coast Guard Station at the bottom of Ridge Street and McCarty's Cove, Ohio Street intersection? Nobody knows, because nobody's done a survey. There's a lot of traffic there. I live on that block. We see it all. Marquette does not need to disconnect streets. It needs to look at how it can connect more streets. With the elimination of Coast Guard Road, you are disconnecting a street in Marquette. Your design is a 12-foot-wide path through the Coast Guard Park. The present path all along Lake Shore Boulevard is eight feet. The city is not required to put in a 12-foot bike pedestrian path. It can be eight, it can be 10, it can be 12 feet. You could easily run an eight-foot bike path and a 14-foot one-way road from Michigan Street to Arch Street for the 300 feet needed to connect Michigan to Arch Street. I am quite sure you will run into significant rock when you are doing the infrastructure work on Arch Street and Coast Guard Road, so the rock could be dealt with at that time. We would like to preserve our neighborhood and traffic flow. We would like to be part of the solution to the change in our neighborhood, not part of the problem, and I don't see us as being part of a problem. I see us as being concerned that we see the real traffic flow, and you don't, because you don't live there. If, I'll put this offer to anybody on the commission, you're more than welcome to sit in my living room and watch the traffic, summer, winter, spring, or fall, and see how much traffic is down there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Anderson, 430 Lake Shore Boulevard and the corner of Michigan Street. Walt and I have nothing to gain from this park plan. The citizens will have something to lose. Dead-ending the 600 block of Michigan Street and abandoning Coast Guard Road will have negative effects on people who use McCarty's Cove, because that's what we see all day is McCarty's Cove, and there are people there day and night, all year round. And so, the reason for dead-ending the street, one of them is so that Arch Street can also be dead-ended, and then you will have your terminating vista of the lighthouse. In the January 8th Planning Commission meeting, some of the commissioners didn't think it was a good idea either to close or to dead-end Michigan Street, because they know how busy the beach is in the summer. When you dead-end the street, you're going to have a lot more accidents with people backing up. You're using parking spaces at the end of Michigan Street, that the new path is turning, so there'll be less room to turn around in at the end. When people drive in, they drive in, and they don't know where they're going, most of them. Other, others at the Planning Commission questioned the small rock outcropping and why it couldn't be removed and run the bike path in a straight line along there, but we were told that we can't have both the road and the bike path, and we still question the why. The rock is nothing special. There is your example, right there behind you. The lighthouse and the whole area is nothing but a rock, and it runs Ridge Street, Arch Street, Michigan Street, and it goes for blocks. So, do you know how many houses on the east side of, of Marquette have a rock in their basement or don't have basements, because there's a rock? So, that one little rock outcropping is not, you know, a sacred rock. Also, the sidewalk from Ridge Street to Ohio is very heavily used in the summertime by walkers and bikers. Bikers don't use the road as much as they use the sidewalk. They go that way because it's faster, it's a shorter point from Ridge Street to Ohio Street than going the bike path road. So, and no, not everybody wants to go to the lake road. We have people come by our house because we put water out for the dog. Other reasons, it's windier. If you walk around the block, you notice the difference, and some days, it's windier and colder over by the lake. And also, with the weather now, have you seen the snow pile at the end of Michigan Street? It's there every winter, because McCarty's Cove parking lot is used, like I said, all year round. So, where are you going to put the snow with the way your bike path comes around? It's right there where the big pile of snow is currently. Finally, I would like to see the place cleaned up. There's that dead tree, broken tree that's been there for years, and you haven't done anything about that yet, and the weeds and the broken fence, like everybody would like to have things cleaned up. So, why don't you start with the simple things? That's my last comment.
Ms. Jones?
Hello. Jess Jones, 400 North Lake Shore Boulevard, addressing the City Commission tonight to express concerns related to Lighthouse Point Project. I realize there's been a lot of effort up to this point, and the original plan that was developed, we all thought was really great, a lot of great stakeholder input, user groups that were interviewed, and then this past fall, the plan changed. Again, if we go back to the original goal, the goal of all of this was to develop a park that the citizens could use, a wonderful green space, tourists, visitors, and having people use it more. So, it is suggested that more buses would visit the park, so a loop where buses could park and turn is being proposed. Currently, buses can fit and park and turn on existing Coast Guard Road. We have also been told that they, that since more people would be using it, the proposal is to create a parking lot over a current parking lot. There is a current gravel parking lot that exists, and they're proposing to just pave that. We are told that residents will be able to access and use the park for recreating, picnicking, visiting the seasonal museum and lighthouse, but they can currently do that. This is city property currently, so they can use the park. I think Ellen's point about separating the path is good, but Walt's point about how many accidents have there been? Presque Isle Island is a combined path also. How many accidents have there been? Where are the studies and the data to prove that we need these, this proposed plan currently tonight? So, instead, the proposal tonight is to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, because people might use the park more and the buses and tours might come through. What I would suggest again is to slow down, and let's develop that park. Let's develop the green space. Let's actually update the captain's quarters and do what we need to do, so that we can prove with actual numbers and information that the usership is there, and the reasons to update and do this road construction, which is mostly what we're discussing tonight, is necessary. So, I asked the commission again to understand and agree with what the Planning Commission saw, and they did not approve the plan, and to represent us, the voice of the people asking, for further review of this plan.
Thank you. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Mayor Protem Reynolds.
I will do another motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I have a second on the motion.
I have a second. Commissioner Reynolds, comments?
Not on the motion.
Commissioner Schlegel? Any comments?
Yeah, no on the motion.
Okay. Any other commissioner? Seeing none. All those commissioners in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
The commissioners opposed signify by saying no. Hearing none. Commissioners, or the motion passes seven zero. Mayor Protem Reynolds, it is your floor.
Well, at this exact moment, I don't necessarily have a question, a comment, I guess. We went through this process and saw the original plan. We've had a work session. We, I just got the Planning Commission notes with all of your guys' comments, I believe, on Wednesday. I didn't get to reading them until Thursday. City Manager, I, I was really under the impression, I apologize, but I thought the residents around the area were on board with this, and I'm, I'm struggling in my own brain now, after hearing public comment this evening, that that's not the case anymore?
Well, I tried to follow up in my emails that their preference is to keep the road. That's their first choice, but if I can paraphrase, and feel free to tell me if I'm wrong, if I can paraphrase, if they have to have a change, or if there has to be a plan, the one that's before you is the one they prefer over all others, other than the very first one that we, we couldn't handle. So, basically, I've spent a considerable amount of time with the neighbors, and the plan before you has been modified several times to accommodate varying discussion, various changes, input from the neighborhood, and I guess if, if they have to live with a plan, the one before you is the one that they prefer.
Okay. Yeah, and I do have one follow-up question. I'm going to have comments in a few minutes. So, is there some kind of, I know that there, there's a, there's a rush between all of us that have been waiting for this Lighthouse Park to open for quite some time, and people have been waiting for years upon years upon years, but I, my question, is there a rush today, February 25th, that we have to, because we can't start till summer anyways? That's just my question.
Well, there is a rush, because we, we are in the planning stages. It has been engineered. We want to get moving on the bidding process now, so we can lock in the contractors for the summer, and Dennis, you can help me out if I'm misspoken, or if there's anything I need to add, but this is the time that we begin to engage our contractors for our summer projects. Correct?
Okay, I'm going to leave it at that for the moment.
I've had a few conversations with the people in the neighborhood, and I guess I'm, I'm just, I'm really struggling with this, this process, because every year, we go through our city, and we look at our streets and the infrastructure that's included in them, and we make changes. We bring them up to code, up to date, up to modern-day standards, that are going to handle the traffic loads that, that are expected of them. And oftentimes, there's right-of-way that's lost and used for everything from parking on the side of the road to bike lanes to, you name it. And our engineers and then staff is asked to go through and evaluate and give you the best option for what you have there. There's, is there currently anybody that needs the existing road, the way it sits right now, to either access or not access a parking space?
Yes.
Okay, we've got one person, and that person has been vetted repeatedly to make concessions and also receive property in lieu to give you the best possible access to your house that does not, that does not include the, that does include a portion of the old road. So, but everybody else that's speaking from the neighborhood, for some reason, has this insane need for an access road that went specifically is, is more of a driveway more than anything, that went to the lighthouse or to the Coast Guard Station when it was positioned there years ago. So, to me, as much as I, I'm looking at this over time now and, and seeing Lighthouse Road, this is Lighthouse Drive Way, and that's, that's the way it is. I've driven on it, I've had to stop for... I've driven on it, I've had to stop for people. I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna tell you that there's more accidents, less accidents, anything other than that, that it's not a bike path and it's not a driveway or it's not a road, because it's gotta be one or the other. There's just not enough room there. The stinking pump house is ridiculous, so that we have to let that ruin all of our plans along this line. But I guess there's gotta be some concession. And I know, at least from the emails and correspondence, that our city manager has sat down with the neighborhood people repeatedly. And then I've had people from that neighborhood come back and with other people that don't live there, question the integrity of our process and also whether or not somebody is quote-unquote "on the take" because of what they are interpreting, which I found insanely offensive and repulsive. And it really, to think that that was even a consideration is beyond acceptance. And I wanna, I wanted to make that known, as much as I probably should have not brought it up. But that's what these neighbors there are alluding to. We've given the engineer at least four times, now if not three or four times. I'm at a bypass, I don't know what to think and I know that I wanna vote for the betterment of the future because that's what we're doing. We're planning for future use for this area. And it can't be both, it just can't be, because that area down there, as it develops further and traffic continues to increase, it's gonna have to say one or the other. And that's why you're seeing the same kind of conflict or questions come up with Presque Isle and whether or not we should have certain designated hours with traffic and walking or walking only or traffic only or what have you. So these are things that we as a community are addressing for the future. I'll stop there. I'm just, literally, this is like it's the biggest pain in the heiny for something that should be able to be worked out through the local neighborhood members and the city staff. I don't get it.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. I'm coming late to this conversation. And I think my, so I'm not gonna speak so much to specifics except to say that it is actually, it is a very tight space that has multiple uses. It's kind of classic land use problem. And so to Commissioner Schlegel's point of why is this so contentious is that, yeah, we're layering multiple uses in one location. And it's a function of, you know, it was, this historical purpose was one type and here we are trying to bring it into the 21st century when it was built for the 19th century, 18th century. I always get that wrong, whatever that was, 1800s. And we don't have that option available to us that the Coast Guard did of just blowing stuff up when we didn't want it, which is what they did with those, what were those things they blew up at the end? They blew up the fog building and rained bricks down upon the city. So, it's the end of the night, it's long, but I just, I want, it is a very tight space. And I think, yes, people have gone back and forth and back and forth. And I think, and here it is, it's gonna be up to us. And I want, and my personal concern, which is different than what's been necessarily raised, is I don't understand why we need to pave that parking lot if it's been in use, not the one by the museum, but the one that's proposed on the other side of the road. That's gonna be used maybe, you know, not the whole year, but part of the year. And I just, I'm really concerned about putting more asphalt down next to the lake. I also wanna say, again, from my perspective, is relatively new, but understand, already understanding who's on this board, who the staff are, there is absolutely, none of this has to do with someone possibly benefiting. The Maritime Museum sits in the pump house, the old pump house of our municipal water supply. It's a magnificent building that I'm glad we have preserved and has a terrific set of artifacts and folks who love sharing the history of that, of our community. And there is nothing about anyone benefiting except to say that we recognize that people wanna come visit and we need to figure out where to put the darn cars. And I wish there was a way we could do the parking lot and not have to pave it on the other side of the road, and I'm done.
Any other comments? Commissioner Frazier?
I agree with everything. I mean, we've looked at this many times, it's been, you know, the Coast Guard took over the new property and we've got Lighthouse Park, we've worked on this for a long time. And we've got a work session, we talked about this. It's always been a bike path, we know that, but it's always been a road. People are always confused, how are we gonna get to the Maritime Museum? It's a very popular place, you know? People that live in the area said, okay, you can go up around, go down the Coast Guard road, you can go to that. Or you can just park by the Coast Guard station and walk in there, it's easier. But we've had lots of conversation, we've looked at this many times. I've walked that path many times, I've walked by Anderson's House many times, I've walked back and forth along the Coast Guard road. A few cars go through this, not a lot, but it's also the same thing we're doing, like Commissioner Schlegel said. Doing with right now in Presque Isle, cars and people just don't get along, it's a very narrow path. And we looked at, okay, can we just move the trail over a little bit? And they said, well, we could, but we have to take this old pump house down, which, you know, we could do. But you have to go up around through hills, remove some trees, do a lot of work, and then you close the building and dealing with plowing and, you know, to keep it open and just, you're looking at more problems, you know, unfortunately. So, like, what we have right now is just trying to find a way to make it a bike path road, but still have access to the parking lot, which we wanna do, you know, whether it be paved or not, we'll work that out. But right now, we're trying to figure out, get it working on, because obviously, we've got a lot of snow now, so it's not gonna be done till probably July. But we're just guessing, but I know last year, we were waiting for the ice to melt, it'd be July. But based on the amount of snow we have this year, probably July, a good looking, good target, I'm just guessing. But I think it'd be good to have a good bike path. We looked at, I looked at it many times and said, okay, this is a bike path, can we just move around? No, we can't, so we agree, make it a bike path, leave it at that. And the city work hard to make this access to everybody else's house. If you had access to your house, the city will work around that, and then you're gonna work on extending your road to make it better. Right now, we're working on very hard to see how we can access the Maritime Museum. That's what we're working very hard right now. How can we do, they've, nothing goes, Commissioner Stonehouse is a volunteer for the organization. He's never come forward and said, we need to do this. The lady that runs the Maritime Museum and then many board members have told us, the Lurizal work session at the Coast Guard station said, here, how can we get access to our property? Summer is our only time to have business. How can we, we said, we're gonna work as hard as we could to work with you. If we do it right away in the spring, work it hard, just how are we gonna do to make it work for you? We said, we're gonna work as much we can to work with everything. So process is just going through right now, but nothing's set in stone. We're gonna pass the thing, make it work, and then we'll work on it later.
Commissioner Campana?
Mr. Anderson spoke about passion. And I understand that you people, it's where you live and, you know, you're very deeply concerned. I appreciate that and we try to understand that for you. But the thing is, there are so many people who've been waiting so long for this park. And he talked to us, when are you gonna open it? When can we use it? And it's overwhelming. I believe that the residents of Marquette wanna see this park be more available. The lift station is the problem here. I mean, if that thing wasn't there, we wouldn't have this conversation tonight. You know, we'd probably have the bike path in by now. But the lift station, as bad as it is, has to stay there. You can't cut trees either because people will be chaining themselves to that tree to stop it. They are some, they're beautiful trees and, you know, I couldn't care less, but, you know, they can't come down. They're just, they're too much a part of that park. As far as safety on the bike path, I totally believe that you, I've been on that for years, as probably has every other citizen in the city. Either run it, you walk it, or you bike it. But I've had confrontation, not confrontations, but you meet a car there and something, you know, there hasn't been an accident that I'm aware of, but it's gonna happen. You just can't put cars and people on that same path. So I really think that we have to have a separate bike path. We're not gonna build condos there. I've had that question too. You're gonna put condos there, it's not gonna happen. And I really believe it's, you just walk in that property, it's a beautiful property, beautiful views, it will be used, people will just walk around. So we need to have this park. I'm getting to the size of the bike path, I heard that statement. Why not narrow it? But I will ask our engineers here, city engineer, and when you build something, you cannot build it to less than specifics. And could you verify that with me, sir?
This one work? Okay. Yes, as far as the bike path, I heard mentioned a few times over the past, through the planning commission work sessions and through the city commission tonight, from various folks that it's 12 feet wide, that is incorrect. The path is 10 feet wide, and that's a minimum requirement for any multi-use path. So to say to make it eight feet is not up to standards, and I would not do that because of safety issues.
Your honor?
Commissioner Smith?
First, I wanted to apologize to a resident for speaking when they were talking earlier. I was making sure that the mayor was protected and having everyone know that he stands nothing to gain from this park with his connection with the Maritime Museum. That was the conversation, I just wanted to make sure we were getting addressed. So as far as the Lighthouse Park plan, you know, part of the tough job up here is doing what's best for the majority. And when we went through the five-year planning process for the Parks and Rec master plan, the top priority was trails and one of the other top priorities was paved biking trails. And that is something that we've heard time and time again as a separate piece from the road. So to answer that question, that has been something that the community wants. A lot more residents asking us for that than some of the concerns coming out tonight. I have spent a lot of time on this issue, trying to help, you know, some folks with compromises. In my opinion, after doing a significant amount of research, a lot of conversations, I do think the plan is safe. I do think it's financially responsible, and I do think it's gonna be a really good opportunity for residents and tourists alike to enjoy, you know, a gem of Marquette. I will say that some things maybe didn't go as planned through this whole process. And I've had conversations with city staff and others to make sure that we try to be as transparent as we can. And even if we are being transparent, perceived transparency is also something that is real. So absolutely lessons to be learned through this process. Again, it's a tough job and I think that by voting for this plan, which I intend to do, I'm doing what's best for the majority of residents in Marquette.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Suppose I need my mic down. Thank you, Jenna, for saying that. That's what I was gonna come back and say. I did have a couple of questions earlier on with this conversation. As somebody who once lived at 402 North Lake Shore, I do know that it actually is busy around there. There is a lot of cars and a lot of traffic. So going forward with this plan, which I believe that it is the best for all the residents, I would really hope that we could come up with some kind of plan to make sure that the cars are not going onto there and what kind of signage we can provide. And, because that's the way I go when I go to McCarthy's Cove, I go around and I park and go to the beach and I just wanna, no, that's not cheating. So I just wanna make sure going forward, we make it the most easy way that nothing bad does happen there. And I think that that's important and I think that we have to make sure we do that going forward. And, yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
And one more thing I forgot to say before, which is to those points around safety. I agree with the planning commission that what we need is a study of the entire Lake Shore Boulevard corridor. The increasing, we're about to have a work session on another segment of Lake Shore Boulevard day after tomorrow, or the 28th, whatever day that is. So we're looking at it in pieces and this functions as a whole, as a whole unit. And we experience it sometimes in pieces, but this is a whole unit. And I think we really need to dedicate city staff and resources to looking at that whole section from Presque Boulevard to Mathson Park and how all of that functions. Where's the parking? Where do the buses go? How do people travel on that safely on whatever transport, feet or wheels that they choose? Thank you.
Well, again, I get to swing at the ball now. Mr. Stackwitz, we finished a transportation study, didn't we? Traffic study not too long ago?
Yes, your honor, that's probably about four years, three years.
Did that include Lake Shore Boulevard as we're kind of looking at it?
It did include Lake Shore Boulevard traffic counts and recommendations for treatments at some of the intersections and things along those ways. But purely from a vehicular standpoint.
Okay, thank you. And to the engineer, if I can, I recall that one of the reasons that they wanted to, they wanted to, it was decided to pave the parking lot was to improve stormwater treatment. Was that part of the, part of the plan or what was the reasoning behind that?
Part of the reasoning for paving the parking lot, I guess, is for, there is a stormwater treatment aspect to it. Currently, what you see being paved is only about half of what's out there now as far as the gravel. So half that gravel you see out there now is gonna actually become green space. So that is a plus for rain, percolation, and stormwater control. Another thing you gotta keep in mind for the pavement of the parking lot is if you're gonna have public parking next to a park, you gotta also have access for ADA. And that's another thing you gotta keep in mind there, that you gotta have as close as possible to whatever buildings that are being accessed be ADA accessible with the parking.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up. Maybe an opinion too, I guess, looking at that area. Ms. Campi made the comment, it would be a problem with emergency vehicles. And I was trying to think of how that would be considering there's only a couple of homes there and the one home would be her home, right on the corner, we've got an emergency vehicle. And then, of course, everything else is arguably accessible. So either coming down Arch Street or right off Lake Shore. So I'm not sure what home would be suspect to having a problem with emergency vehicles. Does that make sense to you or?
Yeah, we had our fire department and the police department both look at that area and they had no concerns about emergency access.
Okay. Okay, thank you. No. Yes, you may.
I'm not talking about emergency access mainly.
Please, at the podium.
To me or my house. Do you wanna know who I am again? Everybody knows Lois Campi, the witch on the corner. Talking about a beach day, traffic down there is on real. You have an emergency at the beach or somewhere down in that area or this thing you're calling the park, how does emergency services get in there and turn around and get out of there? Someone's gonna die before you, before the...
At the park?
McCarthy's Cove area?
McCarthy's Cove, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's certainly an existing problem.
Well?
Okay.
Just thought I'd mention it.
Thank you. Again, did Keith, Mr. Whittington, do you have a comment?
I would just reiterate that the fire and police departments both looked at that area as far as emergency access. They had no issues with it. If it came down to it, they could always use the bike path.
Okay, I understand, thank you. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the project plan for the Lighthouse Park per the attached design.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Second.
Your honor, just a word of advice, this requires five votes to override.
Correct.
Override, okay?
We will, we will need to do five votes. I have a motion, and I have a second. Commissioner Campana, do you have any further comments? I'm sorry, Commissioner Fraser, any further comments?
The thing is about the paving the parking lot, it's probably not a bad idea, because you look at what happened in Prescott. There's that road between the bike path and the bench out. It roared it for many years, always a problem. City finally paved it, made everybody happy. So things, we're looking at reduce city costs and pave it. That's one thing they're looking at.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem?
No really further comments. I think that city staff has heard the concerns of the residents in the area, and I think that we're well aware of them. And I think that going forward, this will make sure that there's all the safety precautions needed to for, you know, cars and ambulances and emergency vehicles. So I feel fairly confident in the staff in that manner.
Commissioners, any other comments? Seeing none, all those commissioners in favor of the motion signify by saying yes. Yes. Those commissioners against the motion signify by saying no. Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to public comment. Any individuals, our comments rather may not exceed three minutes per session or per person. Please state your name, physical address when making public comments.
Walt Anderson, 430 Lake Shore Boulevard, Marquette. I should actually say 430 Walnut Street, Marquette, because that's actually what I live on, is Walnut Street. From Commissioner Schlegel's information, Coast Guard Road was really Lake Shore Boulevard. Lake Shore Boulevard went around the Father Marquette statue and through the Coast Guard Station and out at the end of Ohio Street. That was Lake Shore Boulevard. That at one time was changed to a bunch of different things. McCarthy's Sand Pit, the Coast Guard Road went through, and Lake Shore Boulevard or Walnut Street became Lake Shore Boulevard. So it does really have a name. And the city needs to look at abandoning the Coast Guard Road if that's its name, or is it really Lake Shore Boulevard? I'm not sure which its real name is. But the fact is, is there is a real name to that road. It is not just an access to the Coast Guard. That all changed when they built the new Coast Guard Station, and Arch Street finally went through, because that dead-ended at the railroad tracks. So there's been a lot of change in the neighborhood. What you just did tonight was not good for the neighborhood. And there is no Plan B from what you have. When there is a problem with car traffic and bike traffic and pedestrian traffic, what's Plan B? And to the city engineer's benefit, talked with a person from a large metropolitan area, bike paths can be eight foot, 10 foot, and 12 foot. And it is a park, and that makes things different. So we could have a clear eight-foot bike path or a matching bike path with, with what exists as well as a road. It could be done. You've just chosen not to, and it's not to the betterment of the citizens of Marquette. They aren't going to appreciate not having a through road. And when you find out, what's your Plan B? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else to address the commission?
Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, here in the city of Marquette. First, a procedural thing. I tried coming in for maybe about a half an hour ago. All the doors are locked in the city hall. So at whatever time that Johnson did their thing, there's an automatic lock now on the doors. And if there weren't people hanging out by the front door, I probably would've had to only come through the police station. So just in general, I know we don't normally go to 9:30, but something to keep in mind that your doors are automatically locked, and with the windows so full, I couldn't knock on any of the windows to let you know. So that, that took a little wind out of me. I had to run in here. So I come to your attention, though, because a lot of things happened tonight, and a lot of things didn't happen tonight. First, I'm gonna open this up. How many people here have sold drugs, run a pharmacy, been a person who operated behind the desk of a pharmacy? Anyone? Anyone? Thank you. Anyone here been a bartender? Thank you. Anyone here been a bartender? Okay, again, thank you. Anyone here sold cigarettes to, at convenience stores, or works behind the counter at a, at a shopping center? Those are all positions that at one point were illegal. And it was up to the state to say, these are the rules. But the state took a long time to make those rules happen. In prohibition in 1926, it was just break open the, the stores and let people serve. But you got a lot of bad liquor that way, too. So I agree that there should be time to pause, but opting out fixes the city of Marquette. Literally, I got a phone call while you guys were talking. I got a phone call that says, hey, if the city of Marquette opts out in the next two weeks, I can't call you up again and say, how much is Shopko running? You know, how much is the open store at Shopko or one of the other businesses? And this is 1.8 million dollars coming into your pockets to that day, just before the application goes in and you're talking revenue. This comes straight off the top, according to the law, according to what they need licenses for. It's an expensive business, is what I'm trying to say. The water, the electricity, all of these things could benefit the city a lot more than what it sounds like with a fear. And if anyone who says you've sold any of those, those legal substances before, you know what it takes to be a responsible person around those substances. That's what's gonna happen. And I'm sorry, I'm running out of time and I'm running out of breath. But I do wanna also say, the conflict of interest is kind of pertinent. In that sense, if you did sell pharmaceuticals, how can you say no to selling something like this, or allowing something to be sold here? And how can you say, let's slow down? You benefit from that business. At the same time, Mr. Stonehouse, you wrote a book about boating in, in the Great Lakes. Everything you do related to the water under your watch is gonna seem superficial and benefiting your, your book. Thank you.
I have one more. Denise Lovellis, 255 Orange Road. So I just wanted to expand just one detail I did not bring up earlier, and that was the real estate in regards to the marijuana. So I am told, or at least the rumor is, that the elf out at KI Sawyer or out in Republic has already been sold. Apparently, it sold for 249,000 to become a pot farm. So, and then there's also properties between Champion and also in Mishigami closer to the Bergen County line. So that was one of the items, too, of concern that I wanted to bring up, just for your consideration. So thank you.
Frank Jeffarito, these are my opinions. Our marijuana discussions have served as a great case study in what goes on in the minds of women versus men, also an example of how testosterone clogs brain cells. The males want to opt out to wait and see what the state does while the women are exercising a cerebral approach. However, we do appreciate the male's effort to start facilitating the implementation ahead of time, so we may move faster once the state gets its act together. Pardon me for noting, this is the same state that boasts more fresh water than any other, yet fed poisoned water to the people of Flint, and whose DEQ allegedly endorses the exploitation of our environment. I've at least done a little of the math, as reported February 11th, and contend the numbers are there. I'm not certain, but will put myself on the line, as I do regularly. Let us recount my history in here, contesting Mr. Stonehouse's rhetoric. Time has proven me correct every time, and him wrong every time, as our record attests, an assertion he will not challenge. What is the need, he asks? Do the business plan, he says. Great idea. Why aren't we started? We do appreciate his mention of wanting a functional ordinance ready to go by the time the state sets its rules. There's no reason for this to take an entire year with so much data to go on from other legal states. Both Ms. Campenzi and the lobbyist, the latter of whom we see, are too seldom hear from, are supposed to be advocating for us in Lansing. They ought to work especially hard on this matter, being that Marquette County voted 6% higher for legalization than the average Michigan county. February 11th, Mr. Stonehouse said the land code was more important than the marijuana, knowing the media was here to cover the latter. His point may not set right with those who aren't eligible for medical marijuana, but can also benefit greatly. Of course, his point is well taken, in that land development affects us all. Controls are desperately needed to protect us from certain selfish developers among us, although parts of the code seems subjective, which exposes our vulnerability to the who's who mentality that we, we have reported on an umpteed number of times. Lastly, we're still having trouble with Mr. Stonehouse doing unrelated work during public comment, some of which he does out of sheer arrogance, arrogance that was best left at the East Coast. He told a woman tonight that her comment must be directed at the chair after he'd looked down during every second of my February 11th closing comment. Arrogance has no place in Marquette, and I'm willing to bet at least some people at home are thrilled to hear someone finally mention what many of us are long aware of, although he was looking up for most of this comment.
Anyone else to address the commission? Anyone else to address the commission? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Comments from the commission? Commissioner Hill?
Thank you for sticking it out, everybody. And work session to come on Lake Shore Boulevard, and what's gonna happen to the part of the road that has been, the lake's been eating lately. Hope to see you on the 28th. Thank you.
Long meeting about some stuff going on, and appreciate it's almost over. And we're gonna work with Lighthouse Park. It's gonna be done, but it won't be done until soon. It won't, we're gonna process it, but it won't be done right away. It's gonna be done, you know, it's gonna be summer, but it can be late summer redoing. So just keep in touch with that, and we'll work it out best we can. As far as, you know, what Mayor Stonehouse, he's running a meeting. If anybody wants to try and run a meeting and listen to people, they can try and do it themselves. And that's all I gotta say for that. And look forward to it. And Lake Shore Boulevard, the city does have a lot of stuff going on, you know, they say, they don't wanna think, wait for the state to figure out, because we, we got a road that's going away that might not be there anymore. In fact, Mike Anderson, just open the road back up, you know, the lake's frozen, we're talking about anymore. And, you know, so but, we're, that's, there's more important things going on in the city than worrying about some marijuana industry. But, you know, other than that, good meeting.
Not much to say. I would just like to mention that, in case you haven't noticed it, we're getting a lot of snow this winter.
[laughing]
And believe it or not, there's people out there that cannot understand why the city is not being more efficient in what they're doing. This is the most snow we've had in a lot of years. It keeps coming. Our public works people are working 12-hour shifts, not eight, 12-hour shifts. They're working weekends. They're working nights. They're doing the best they can to remove the snow. Yes, we have blinded corners and narrow streets, but you know what? The roads are plowed. They're doing their best when they can. They're cutting snowbanks, but you can't cut every snowbank in town in a week, you know? They are working at it. They're not sitting back at the service center playing cards, I guarantee ya. So give them some appreciation. You wouldn't wanna be out there at 3:00 in the morning on a cold night plowing snow, but they are, so that you can get to work in the morning. Lastly, I don't like our mayor being called arrogant one, two, and three times. I, I think that's disrespectful. Thank you.
Oh, me. I'm just to echo your comments, Steve, about the public works department. I had continued to get complaints, but then I also get wonderful comments, and also to the citizens of Marquette that keep helping out other citizens. And I keep seeing that all over social media, which is super awesome. So just the kudos to the public works department for continuing to work so hard during such a hard time. I'm not gonna expel anymore on this evening's meeting. I think we had enough time spent on two very important issues. I'm glad that we're gonna keep moving forward on both of them, however.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, again, wanna reiterate, thank you, Public Works, for all the work they've done. The charge now with these next couple of meetings in regards to the marijuana regulations is now for those people to come back out and to voice their opinions, so that we can take their important information to task throughout this next process. And I thought we had some really good conversation on this tonight, and I applaud the other commissioners and the city for the work that they've done, and I appreciate the rhetoric, and I hope that we can continue to move forward and do what's right for our community. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith? I've just got comments on two work sessions. So we had a work session on the Lower Harbor pilings, and that will be a vote that is coming up quickly, and it's possible that may need to be a special meeting to accommodate schedules, just so the public is aware, watch for that in the coming weeks, sometime in March, it sounds like. We did have a work session already on that topic, and it sounds like we're gonna be looking for a vote. And then, secondly, as Commissioner Hill mentioned, we do have a work session this coming Thursday, February 28th at 5:15 PM regarding Lake Shore Boulevard, the part of the road that keeps getting destroyed. So that's gonna be an interesting conversation later this week. I hope we get some members of the public that wanna be part of that process. Thank you.
Again, I get to swing at the ball. Really, who knows the public works? Those guys and those gals have just been doing an incredible job. You wonder how they do it. And I guess I can't speak highly enough of what they do and how they, how they've done it. I don't know if we still do it or not, but it used to be, you could ride a snowplow. You, as a citizen, could go along with one of the public works guys or gals as they're, they're riding the plow. And that is a religious experience, because you realize just how good they are to be able to do what they do. You know, but even an event like this, where we're, we're fighting through the deep snow, we know we've got the visibility problems with the high banks and trying to get out of a street corner or a driveway. But I think in a way, it brings out the best of what we have in Marquette. It brings out the willingness of people just to be a little more careful. They know it's a little more dangerous, a little more willing to help your neighbor, a little more willing to get through this and do it the way we in Marquette are used to doing it. And that's a wonderful thing to know. It's a wonderful thing to see. So just, just really terrific. Great night tonight in terms of input, particularly on the marijuana side. Again, it's gonna happen. It's just gonna take us a bit to get there, because we've gotta do it the right way. Just can't throw it up and say, go do it. Other than that, Mr. Manager, floor is yours.
Thank you, and thank you, commissioners, for your continued support with what we're trying to accomplish here. And thank you for your comments regarding public works. I'll put one other thought in your, your heads, and if the public's still listening, that, you know, we haul snow to make room for barstool, but we're running out of places to haul snow as well. So, I mean, we have set aside several acres for the course of the winter, and we are now nearing a point where you may be getting an email from me at some point saying we're gonna be piling snow someplace where we've never piled it before. So places like on the Moosewood location and things around Prescott that we normally don't, we have bigger parking lots where we can, we can actually pile when we haul. So that's one of the difficulties. You see the public works moving the snow and making the banks nice, and but where we dump it is sometimes is big a problem. And lastly, if you give me your blessings, I'll make sure Ron stays on task with the marijuana issue. Just make me his supervisor, and I'll, I'll make sure it gets done. Okay?
I think that's loud and clear. Anything further? We adjourn.